And move to that, which is item A under Old New Business. This is for our state election that is coming up, and this is more of a formality. Is there anything else that you want to add to that?
No, this is standard operating procedure for warrants, requires the board's signature, vote and signature.
Okay. Does anybody, oh, I was gonna say, does anybody have any questions? You ready?
I move that we vote to approve and post the November 8th state election warrant as presented.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carrie's four zero one. Thank you.
I guess we can go.
We can go ahead and go, okay, all right. So I know we were hoping to have one more person from our DEI task force here, but I think we can go ahead and get started. So, Michael, I know this is a project that you've been working with a team, and this was out of the racial equity study that we had done with Suffolk. Do you want to go ahead and kind of introduce?
Sure, so it's been a while since the DEI task force was formed, a few months, so we thought it would be prudent to come here and give the select board an update on what we've been doing and what we plan on doing moving forward. Before I get started, I would like to ask each of our members to introduce themselves. I'll call on you so it's not awkward. So Makita?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Makita Keegan. I was part of the initial effort for the racial equity study, and now I'm serving here on this committee, and I'm very much looking forward to our presentation this evening. Thank you for listening to our progress and our efforts.
Thank you. Mwala?
Good evening, I'm Mwala Ketyenbo. I'm a representative for Ashland Residents for Equity in Action. Looking forward to any questions that you have, and also completing this project only by end of year or next year. Thank you.
Cinty is unfortunately not with us right now. I'll move on to, Anne Kraus is officially on the DEI task force, but she's been supported by other members of Ashland as United, and Karen, I believe you're here representing them?
Sorry, I'm Karen Waldstein, and I am helping Anne complete her term. It's been really fascinating work and really encouraging work for the town, I think, so glad to be here.
Thank you. KG?
Hi, good evening, KG Narana here. I now live on Seventeen Half-Crown Circle in Ashland. I dealt with Makita, I started with her in the study group, and I'm continuing on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Another member of the task force, Rabbi Eric Gervis is unable to be with us tonight, and rounding out the task force is Jennifer Ball, our assistant town manager, and myself. So, and also I want to say to the members, if you want to interject or add things as we go along, please feel free to do so, just jump right in. First, let me review the charge of the task force as the select board came up with it. So the charge of the task force is to develop policy recommendations and regulations that can be adopted and used by the select board and town manager to guide Ashland in making our community more open, welcoming, and equal for all its residents and stakeholders. We have a six-month timeframe to provide initial recommendations, so I don't think we're gonna make that. We felt like it was more important to get this right as opposed to get this done quickly, and I think that was a sentiment that the board agreed with. And just to give you an idea of what, how this formed and what we're working on and what we are looking at working on in the future, so if you recall back in the summer of 2020, we formed the Racial Equity Steering Committee. That was in the wake of the George Floyd murder, and obviously there was a sense and an urgency to act in response to not only that, but other, you know, structural racism issues that have been prevalent in our society for years. So part of the work that we did there was contract with Suffolk University to develop a racial equity initiative report. So just as a reminder for people, that solicited community feedback about issues that are facing us at this time. The task force worked really, really hard, or excuse me, the Steering Committee worked really, really hard with Suffolk to basically get that input and then distill that into an actionable report that was presented to us in 2021, November of 2021. So realizing that we needed to take the next step from the report to action, we formed the Diversity Equity Inclusion Task Force on April 20th, or April 2022. And we really, when we looked at the report, what we distilled it down to was into four specific areas that we wanted to approach and tackle. First was economic and business development, second was DEI and government, third is equal accessibility and development and community engagement and outreach. We've worked through two of those, and I'll give you an update on those a little bit later. Excuse me, somebody here. Also, I can say that in August 2022, we were notified by Senate President Spilka's office that both her and Representative Lewis were able to secure $75,000 for a DEI strategic planning initiative in the state budget. So we certainly want to give thanks to our elective representatives at the state level for being able to secure that money and seeing the importance of that, and how it's going to be important to us moving forward. So I'll pause right there. Anything, before I move on into what we've been doing, do any of the task force members want to add anything right now? Okay. I can't see faces, so if people are nodding, I can't necessarily see that.
I'm waving my head no.
Oh, okay. All right. So like I said, what we've been doing is we've been working on two of these issues, the economic and business development and the DEI in government, and setting up goals and objectives for those. Again, I'll get into those a little bit deeper later. But one of the things we've also talked about in our planning is a community event at the new Public Safety Building. Hopefully, it will happen January 2023, at least that's what we're anticipating. This is gonna be an opportunity to have a dialogue between community members and our public safety personnel, and talk about issues that are facing, you know, minorities here in town, and also, we really want to look at it as a way to introduce our public safety officials to the community as well. One of the things that we really want to try to reinforce and what we want to try to accomplish is we want people's first interactions with our public safety officials to be in a positive setting. I think that's really, really important to help establish those relationships, so people aren't necessarily being introduced to a police officer or a firefighter when there's a crisis, or they're potentially being accused of doing something wrong. So in an effort to really bridge that, we're hoping that this community event in January will be a positive, positive event for that moving forward. We also hope to provide tours of the Public Safety Building to members of the community that show up. We've talked about this with chiefs, they feel comfortable with it. Obviously, there's some sections that we wouldn't take people through, but yeah, we're looking, we're looking forward to putting that on. So I mentioned we had broken things down into four distinct areas, and what we are tasked to do is really come up with goals for each of those areas, and then start drilling down and start looking at objectives and tasks and information that we want to gather through that. So the focus area one is business and economic development. What we came up with are really four distinct goals that we're trying to address, and that's ensure equal access to opportunities and supports for all our businesses in town, implement and expand programming, outreach, and promotion, encourage businesses to hire a more diverse workforce, and then also integrate diverse arts and culture into our economic development activities. And then we're currently working on the DEI in government section, and so that we've broken that down into three goals. Diversify our membership on elected and appointed boards and committees, diversify our staff and employees, ensure that they have the tools to respect the entire community, and then ensure that our policies are reflective of the entire community. And so that's where we currently are right now. Before I open up to members of the task force if they want to add anything, or certainly open it up to the board, I really want to give thanks to Mwala for putting together this presentation. It's like really, really sharp, so I know she worked hard on that, so thanks again, Mwala, for taking that on. Okay, any of the task force members want to add?
That's a quiet bunch.
Okay, we're quiet tonight. Okay. So with the board-
Very disciplined crowd.
Yes.
All right. Yolanda, you have a question?
So thank you for this, you guys have done some really great work, and I look forward to more. My one question is, what is the expectation to, that the $75,000 is gonna be used for? What that, the money that we're getting?
So what we're planning on doing is bringing on another consultant with expertise in this area to help guide us through the rest of this process. There are certainly experts out there in the DEI field that have done work with municipalities. We're hoping to find somebody of a really good caliber that will help us with that. Our next meeting, which is actually tomorrow, we're gonna focus on putting together the characteristics and qualities that we're going to be looking for, and we'll develop an RFP as part of, that will culminate in finding somebody.
Okay, thank you.
Steve?
So thank you to all of the committee members. I was particularly pleased to see the inclusion of a community event at the new building, new Public Safety Building, and I think it's so important that we develop a, our community policing component to, I think, the highest and best level that we can. I know when Chief Rossi was being interviewed, one of her, I think her goals and her foundations was the idea of community policing, and how important that is to, you know, for all members of the community, so I'm pleased that that's gonna be part of it. You know, we've got a, we will have a great, great facility when it's open, and I think it'd be a great opportunity to kind of really bring the community together, so.
I'm glad you brought up the chief, just to break in here for a little bit. As we've gone through these goals and worked on those, we have had different members of our staff come in and help us work on those, so when we were doing economic and business development, Beth Reynolds was really a key part of that. As we've done the DEI and government work, we've had Lisa Uliolo, our former HR director, in, as well as Chief Rossi.
Joe, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the presentation is, and the plan that you have is, that you've created is a great job, done awesome, awesome work on it. I just have one question. I noticed there is no implementation or any type of connection or reaching out to the schools, and I don't know if that was by accident, or is that something that you folks look to do later on down the road, once the initial plan has been worked out? Because that, you know, we have the triangle of a community, you know, it's residents, government, and schools, and if this is gonna be part of this whole plan, why are we leaving the schools out on this?
Yeah, I think that's a good question, Joe. I certainly reached out to Superintendent Adams when we started this to see if they would like to have a representative on this task force. They're going through their own strategic plan, and they've done their own DEI work as well, and I think they're taking the results of that and really trying to formulate that into changes in their curriculum, changes in staff or hiring. So they're really focusing on getting their stuff ready, and I think we can integrate them as we go on.
I just hope it's not a mixed message to the folks that are out there. You know, the kids come home and they talk to their parents about what the school is saying, and then their parents are hearing another, another side of, you know, the version of what you folks are trying to implement, and, you know, I hope it doesn't cause a, you know, a crossover that could be a little opposite of what's being discussed from one to the other. That's all.
Yep, go ahead.
I know that Area has worked very closely with the schools before, and someone from Area may want to, you know, expand on this, they worked very closely with the schools even before they started doing some of the other general government work. So that is going forward, and as Michael said, the schools are working very hard on their review already.
Yeah, I knew the school was working on it, I just kind of curious as to why that wasn't a component in this, in this, in this plan.
Happy to chime in on behalf of Area. Thanks, Yolanda, for bringing that up. So Area has been working with, closely with Mike Kyra, and in the beginning, we were talking about curriculum, trying to find books that were accurate and curriculum towards different grades to portray accurate and positive enlightenment of different ethnic backgrounds, different people of color, and we were successful at that, and so we've set goals within that school committee to see how we can try to have people of color be more integrated with, within the different school systems, and so I know, like, some of the things that we've done is provide suggestions for books, media, we've had people of color in different, in different jobs come in to the job fairs and talk to students about what they do, and I know that we tried to also talk to them about the survey as well, which I, we tried to push as much of that towards our members to take, to encourage them, that their voice is very important, that it needs to be heard in order for us to be able to work together to create a positive environment for all students.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Mwala.
And also, I believe, Karen, I was just gonna call on you, I believe Mike Kyra's part of Ashland as United, correct? I think you're muted, Karen.
Yes, Mike, sorry about that. Mike is part of Ashland as United, but what I was going to mention is that for the Juneteenth celebration where Ashland as United and Area worked together, it was Area that brought in the schools for the poetry contest, which was a really wonderful addition, and I would add it to the list of impact that you're putting together, because, you know, there was really, I think, a wonderful showing from the schools.
Yeah, I think that's a very good, good point. I think the point, the takeaway from this is that certainly the schools are not resting on their laurels with regards to this, they're actively working on it, they've been working on it, and continually working on it.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Karen, appreciate that. Mwala, thank you.
So I just have a couple of questions. So first of all, thank you to the task force for all the work that you've done on this. It's, I think that this is, this gives us a really good framework for going forward. So first question is, so these are the goals that you've identified in these two focus areas, are you thinking that the consultant that you'll bring onboard will kind of help with the objectives and the tasks as well, or is that more like task force oriented and then implementation is more for the consultant?
I think we have yet to really have a conversation and come to an agreement about that, but Makita, you're shaking, you're nodding your head, and I'm gonna use that as an opportunity to pull you into this conversation.
Okay. No, exactly what Michael said, you know, these are the things that we are working on right now and identifying, we have an idea of where we need some assistance, like Michael said, tomorrow night, we have a meeting, and we're going to be refining some of our requirements at that time, and then getting the help that we need to be able to get this thing off the ground, so I hope that answers the question.
That does, thank you, thank you, Makita. And then just, you know, thinking about this down the road, $75,000 isn't going to get us to kind of where we need to be, because I'm envisioning, like, if we're implementing new policies in town, that would require diversity training and more economic money towards that, which would probably be, you know, a budgetary ask, so is that something that is, you're thinking about for this next, like, next town meeting, or how, just trying to like put it into kind of context, because I know some towns even have like a director of DEI, you know, different, I know it's mostly like larger communities, but also I think, you know, the effort that we're putting towards is that might, it might lend itself to that, so I was just curious about the budget.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, I think we have, in the work that we've done so far, one of the goals is to hire a DEI director, somebody who can focus on this work, give it the attention that it deserves. I'm not sure if we're gonna be able to put that in a budgetary in like 2024. One of the things I'm hopeful that we can do is incorporate some training, and I'm excited for our new HR director to start, and for her to really take a look at that and dive into it. Yeah, they, I think, I just, you know, at some point, the community's gonna have to determine what type of community it wants to be and what's important for them and their values, and so a budgetary document, as I've always said, is a reflection of the community's values. So that is, you know, it goes through a process, the budget goes through a process, and, you know, we hope that our efforts and our initiatives that we put forward as part of this DEI work is supported.
Thank you. And then just one other question, just following up on sort of the focus area two, where we talk about that, you know, diversify our staff, employees, you know, when I, when I think of that, I think of, you know, our, specifically our police department and trying to ensure that we have a good diverse candidate pool for our police department, which also goes into the discussion of civil service, so I just wanted to kind of put that out there as something that I personally think is important, but, you know, I think that that should be part of the whole discussion with whoever you guys bring onboard for consultants.
I agree, and I'll have to say that the police have been open to having conversations about that. We've worked for a period pretty intensely on trying to come to some type of agreement that is mutually beneficial for us all, and takes care of some of the issues that they're concerned about with coming out of civil service, while also allowing us that flexibility that being out of the civil service system, you know, gives us, so.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any other questions? Does anyone else from the task force have any final thoughts or anything that you guys want to share, what your experience has been so far, or anything in general? I'm not gonna call on people, but I'm not gonna be, I'm not gonna be, I'm not gonna be mean like Michael.
Well, no, well, I was gonna get ahead of you, and so nominate here. The only thing I wanted to say was that I'm very thankful for being able to work with such a dedicated group of folks who really care and love this community, and that's not just the folks who are on this task force, but, you know, the folks who have come in and spoken with us and worked with us and helped us to shape some of this so far, and your questions from select board have been immensely helpful, and, you know, we're really looking forward to being able to serve the community with what we put together, so I just wanted to say that, and, you know, the work continues.
Yeah, I mean, the community obviously is great, but I will have to, I gotta single out the task force, this group of individuals, they are top-notch, super, they're great to work with. We meet twice a month, so we meet a lot, and they are dedicated to being there and showing up and participating and being part of it, so it's a really good group of people. We're really lucky to have them.
I think Cinty just came onboard.
Oh, and Cinty! Cinty is here.
So we're gonna, we're gonna call on you, Cinty.
Why did I do this sign?
We were, we were just, we were just finishing up our discussion and had a, had a great presentation and outline of everything that the task force has been, been doing so far, and sort of where you guys are looking to take this in the future, so unless anybody else has any, Cinty, if you have any comments or questions or anything that you would like to add, feel free to jump in.
Nothing at the moment, thank you, Brandy.
Okay, well, thank you for joining us. And so with that, I would just say thank you to the task force and for everyone, for Jen and Michael, who've been part of this, and I think this is really important work that our community is doing, I think this is something that is going to be kind of an ongoing thing, this is not just a sort of a one-plan thing, this is something that I think is gonna be part of our community going forward, so, you know, thank you for the work that you're doing, we look forward to seeing the updates and how this evolves, and, and thank you for coming and being a part of this tonight.
So just one other comment, we were talking, it seems that the confluence between the discussion about the comprehensive plan and the work that DEI is doing seems to be, you know, working timeline-wise very well, because I think, you know, this, this work seems to me to be foundational to any comprehensive plan. So I think it's, again, I want to just mirror Brandy's comments, you know, great job, and look forward to seeing all of you at events in the community.
If I can just add on, because I think you brought up a really good point about this being part of, like innate to the comprehensive plan process, so if you remember the proposal I put forward for the comprehensive plan steering committee, that included a member of the Diversity Equity Inclusion Task Force, and I think that's a critical piece for any steering committee for a comprehensive plan, part of the community.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you, everyone, for all your hard work.
Thank you, guys.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, that was a really good presentation. So I think just, we have a couple members here from the Ashland Lions. Further on in our agenda, we had reviewed the request for a Gaga ball pit, we have a few minutes till our next scheduled appearance, so we wanna, let's go ahead and move, move you guys up in the agenda so you guys don't have to sit here through our entire-
Why not? Why?
I mean, you can, you can really stay.
Because we want to make sure they get home.
We have to sit through their, you know, Lions meetings all the time.
So, so just, just to kind of explain, so we, and I, and you guys are gonna have to talk through your request and what you're looking to do, but the request, it looks like the Ashland Lions are looking to put a Gaga ball pit in Stone Park, and I'll let you guys kind of, were you okay? Were you okay with that? Oh, okay, I thought there might have been something wrong with the mic. So would you guys like to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about what you're proposing to us?
Sure, my name is Shirley Ann Doctor, I'm from the Ashland Lions.
Easy, easy, Seiko. Ashland Lions.
We have a special project fund that we would like to use to benefit the children of Ashland, and we met with our manager Mike, her name is, I'm looking for them to see. Michelle, we're talking about ideas for using this plan, and Mike had mentioned the idea of a Gaga ball pit for the middle school and middle, mid-school students. And Mike had mentioned the idea of a Gaga ball pit for the middle school and middle, mid-dest school students. The younger students, the elementary school students have the kids' park. But the middle school and mid-dest school students don't seem to have too much for activities in town. Especially on early these days, when they come down from the middle school or from the mid-dest and they sometimes hang around at the stores. And there's really nothing to do, just to hang around. So, um, Mike had mentioned Gaga ball, and I had never heard of it before. I went on Wikipedia and discovered that Gaga is from a Hebrew word meaning touch-touch. And it's a variation of dodgeball, is played within a hexagonal area, a walled area, the walls are about twenty-eight inches high.
Doc, can I, Doc, can I interrupt you just a second? Is your mic on? Is the green light on? Okay, sorry.
Now, what's that?
No, it's fine. So the game is played within a, a hexagonal area, the walls are about twenty-eight inches high. And there's a rubber mat underneath the pit for the ball to bounce. And I don't really understand the, the game myself, but, you know, according to what I've heard, the kids love the game and they know all the rules. And so we thought that this would be a great addition to the town for the children. And we talked about placement for it, and we thought that maybe to the left of the pavilion at Stone Park might be a good choice because it's halfway between the middle school and mid-dest school and both students could, to use it there. So that was a, an area we, we looked at. I, I met with Doug Small and from the DPW, and he looked at the site and thought there'd be a perfect area, a flattened area for this pit, which is about fifteen feet in diameter, or fifteen feet across. And it wouldn't take up all that area to the left of the pavilion, so there'd still be area for other uses. So that's where we thought the pit would go. Checked with some companies on pricing and found out it's not cheap for the pit and for the rubber mat to go underneath it. I got a quote from, this is Playground Outfitters, the quote, the most recent quote I have is, the total is, with shipping, four thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars and forty-seven cents. Lions have some money in their fund, but not enough to fund the total pit and the rubber mat. So it would be asking for the select board to help us to fund the completed project. Select board's CEO member, Steve Mitchell, came up with a great idea. If we do this project, the kit comes as the, pit comes with a kit that we put together, and the Lions could put it together and maybe have the students help us to put it together. That way they feel more invested in, in this project, in this, this area. And maybe have a dedication of this, and with the public there, the demonstration, dedication. So the kids could show how the game is played and, you know, the public could come and see it. And it would be a great benefit, we think, for the, the children in the town. A quick question, Doc, on the, the pit, we also, when we, the four of us met, we, you also talked about a, the floor of the. The rubber mat. The rubber mat. Is that included in that? This is, the total includes the rubber mat. That includes that, okay. It's the pit and the mat. Yeah, yeah, okay. And I just, the, the other thing, I know our King Lion this year had sent out an email questioning the, the floor and asked whether it would, something like sand or stone dust or something. And it seemed that that has no bounceability to it, so that's why this rubberized flooring is used. Exactly. Okay.
Does anybody, Yolanda?
So is this a permanent structure? Does it get installed and just stays there forever? Or do we take it down in the winter so that it doesn't get damaged, or?
It's permanent, it's fiberglass.
Okay.
It's permanent.
And do we know what the life of like the rubber flooring is? Cause I would think that at some point, if it gets damaged or ripped, that would need to be replaced, or?
Didn't really say about the life of the rubber mat, but I know the benches we install in town, they're fiberglass and they had a fifty-year warranty with them.
But that's just sitting, it's not kids running and jumping in sneakers and boots, and that would be the question. I think it's a great idea. I mean, I don't, I don't know what the game is, not having played it, but I did a little research after we, I saw this, so. Yeah, I think it's something we can look up.
So my questions are, one, the Gaga ball pit needs a Gaga ball. What is the plan to like, you know, I, I have a kid who is not too far out of the middle school, who's in high school now. But I just, I just have a vision of a ball never staying actually, like, within the area of the Gaga pit. You know, because the, unless there's a place to like store it, or, you know, what, what, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, I thought, you know, just like the basketball court, the kids bring their own basketballs. We don't supply basketballs here, and the kids would bring their own ball for the Gaga game.
Okay. And maintenance of the area would be DPW? Or like what, you know, I'm, you know, I'm concerned about like if, if things kind of fall apart or whatever. If, what, what the plan is for, for that. Have you talked to Doug?
We talked with Doug Small and, you know, the Lions and the DPW could work together on maintenance.
Okay. And one other question, did you guys talk to Kelly Rund at all from, from our community center who runs our rec program? I just keep thinking, I'm like, you know, I don't know if Gaga ball is as popular as it was a few years ago. And I'm kinda just making sure that if we invest in putting something there, that it's something that, that will be widely used. So just, just a question, I don't know if, if, if you guys had talked to anyone, if you had talked to Kelly or anyone at the community center.
I haven't talked to Kelly, I talked to the principal of the middle school, Dave, and he said that he thought it would be a very popular thing.
He did, okay, okay.
But he didn't wanna put it in his location.
But he didn't have a place for it.
Okay.
At the middle school.
Okay, all right. Well, I know you guys, you seem very enthusiastic and I appreciate, you know, the, wanting to do something for, for our kids. Cause that age group really is a tough age group because, you know, anyone that's been through, over by one thirty-five during an early release day knows how, how crazy it can be and that there's not a lot of activities for, for the, the older kids to do. So, so thank you for, for, for thinking about this particular age group. Joe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Love the idea, not sure I'm happy about the location. The area itself is fifteen feet, but there's gonna be other supportive areas. So what is the total area that this activity is going to encompass down to the left side of the pavilion?
I wouldn't say any more than twenty feet, you know, either direction.
Okay, because there are activities that people rent out the pavilion and they use the side grass area there. I mean, they could utilize that as well, that would be, you know, another additional feature, but I'm just thinking of other, other matters. I know years past, I had discussed about putting a skate park there. And of course, I got my head handed to me by several residents saying, oh, you're gonna put the older kids near the younger kids? Well, we're not doing anything different by putting a Gaga ball court there. So, I mean, just be prepared to get some flashback from residents who are saying, well, you're gonna have young kids with the older kids, and if the younger kids wanna play, you know, how are you gonna separate them? So just, just be prepared for that, for that discussion. Cause it's gonna come up for sure.
I do wish you would have brought some sort of sketch of like location and where it would be, like, relation to how much space is there? Because I can't, like, you know, I can't think spatially how much, how much space there is over on the left side of the pavilion.
There's a fair amount of space in that grass.
There's a fair amount of space in that grassy area. It's flat before it goes up the hill to the street. I mean, and, and twenty feet, it's not gonna take that whole area. So maybe it goes, it either would go maybe a little further back on the spot or go forward. I mean, I would always think you might want a little more forward, forward so that it's visible from the street. So if the police are going by, they can take a look kind of thing, rather than further back near the woods.
The only thing I would suggest is that whatever is discussed, the, the location, is that there's access to the back path area, to the supply house that's up on the hill, the little greenhouse up there, cause that's where a lot of things are stored for events and stuff. So, uh, you don't wanna keep lugging that, going up and down the hill, you know, hand-delivering it down. You wanna be able to have a vehicle that be able to go up there. So you don't wanna block that path in some way. You have to get to that path on whatever route you take. So just keep that in mind.
Steve, go ahead.
So, um, I assume you're, you're requesting two things. Number one, support for the location, the placement, and then support for some dollars as well. So I would suggest, you know, and I, we talked about an application to the grant program. I would suggest including the visual of that location specifically, so that the board can review that and just, you know, just be comfortable with, with, with where it's gonna be situated. The only other question I have that comes to mind is the proximity to the street. And you perceive any issue with that? I know Yolanda just mentioned that the, the land slopes up to the street. But any, any concerns that you can see with?
There's a guard rail there.
What's that?
There's a wooden guard rail.
Is there?
Yeah.
Okay. So as far as the procedure on an application for the select board's funds, how do we go about doing that? Yep, it's, it's open right now, so there is an application process online. It's online. Yeah.
Can I ask a question? I, I mean, I'm not opposed to, you know, taking money out from, from the, you know, the, the selection grant fund for this. But we have CPC money for open space and recreation. Isn't this a recreation activity? And why couldn't they petition the CPC for that funding?
Well, I mean, you could.
Yeah.
Yep, another source.
That's another source. And believe me, I'm sure there's more funding there that's available, because they haven't put a lot into rec, you know, recreation areas. So, just, it's just a thought.
But then they have to go to town meeting.
Yeah, that's the only.
It's a town meeting process to get CPC funds.
Okay, do you plan on getting this done before the snow flies, or do you wanna do it in the spring?
In the spring, yeah.
One thing I just wanted to bring up, because we've talked about this for a while. And over the last couple of weeks, we've seen some vandalism activity up in Stone Park. And including, like, within the last couple of days, heavy vandalism. Just paint everywhere, on rocks, on trees, on buildings, the little outbuilding, it's just horrible. I just, you know, wanna make sure, you know, I would hate for the Lions as an organization to make, you know, spend this kind of money on something that just ends up getting damaged. Are you, you know, sure you wanna move forward with that? Just in light of some of this new information.
Seems there would be sufficient policing of that area. I mean, it's right on the street level and right on the corner there. And if there's been a lot of vandalism, it seems though the police could increase their surveillance of the park to cut down on it.
Like, it's like anything else, Doc. I'm sorry, it's like anything else, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
No, go right ahead.
You know, you, you have to, it, it, it's one of those, you can't have somebody there twenty-four seven.
Right.
You know, it's one of those things. And, you know, the cruises do go by and it's one of those scenarios where, oh, you're lucky enough to see somebody doing something. You know, type of deal. There are surveillance cameras out there, I'll let you know that. And let the public know that there are surveillance cameras and we have caught individuals doing things to the pavilion area itself and kids' park. And it's been, you know, taken care of with the, the PD, along with, you know, juvenile court deferment programs. So, you know, that, that, that's an option. But again, it's one of those scenarios where, okay, we're lucky enough to see it and let it happen, but, you know.
Are there signs here that say surveillance cameras in use?
Certainly are.
There are.
Oh, there certainly are.
Good.
So.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? No? Okay. So as far as tonight, do we want to wait until we have a proposal from them, more detail, a sketch, before we, we take a vote?
Yeah, I would, I personally would love to see the location itself, where we have, you know, activities going on there, you know, throughout the summer and stuff. And I just would hope that that wouldn't interfere with that. And if anything, I, I know the kids' park sign needs to be worked on.
We're doing that.
I, I know you are.
Yeah.
I know you are. And it's greatly appreciated as well.
Yolanda?
I just wanna say thank you for coming. I think there might have been a conversation where we could have told them before them coming to say, it sounds like this would be a great opportunity for the BAA grant program. Because I think then you can show us the true financials, right? How much you have to give and how much you're gonna need to make up the difference. That would be part of the grant process as well as the location. So, but thank you for coming tonight and, and giving us this information. And then you can go online if you're not sure, I'm sure one of us could help you walk through it and do the grant process.
Can we extend the grant?
Who would have a, who would have a plot plan of Stone Park with the measurements?
I mean, what you could do is go to Ashland Maps Online and zero in on the parcel and utilize that. We can help you out, Doc.
Yeah, actually, I kinda like, well, first of all, to talk, speak about the gra, our grant program, we have a fall and a spring round. So you don't necessarily have to do it this round, you can do it in the spring, cause you're not gonna install, install it before the winter anyway. But I like the idea that Joe brought up about the, the CPC funding as well. You, you, you should or could be, well, you should be able to apply for the full amount through that, that process. And that would, again, be a spring process as well. It has, it has to go through town meeting, but it would seem like, like pretty light lifting. Very good. Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank you both for, for being here tonight, for bringing this to us. And for wanting to do something for our, our older kids. It's important stuff. Keep 'em busy, keep 'em busy.
Remember those days fondly.
I do. I'm not that far away from that. I am not that far removed. Okay, so moving on in our agenda. An update on four thirty-three Chestnut Street, we have Mr. Paul Gustafson here, joining us this evening. Hi, Paul, how are you?
Hello, ladies and gents, good, how are you?
We're good.
Good, how are you?
Fine, thank you.
So, so just the last time you were here, we had talked about a few deliverables that, so before we get into kind of the update and what, what's happening with, with Hall House. So I think the last time we spoke, three weeks ago, you had committed to, to getting us a stamp survey and a proposal for the, the interior, as well as, I think, some sketches on the porch. So I just wanted to see, cause I, cause I know we haven't received anything on the, on the survey, so that, I wanna make sure we, we touch upon all of that. So, do you wanna start with just a, an update? Or do you wanna launch into your, the presentation? We all have copies of that.
All of it, all of it. Can I share my screen? I have the ability to view that information, Paul, but I can pull it up myself. But I can go ahead and pull up the presentation on my screen. Okay, I had, yeah, cause I had augmented it slightly, but let's go with what you have, so. All right, cool. All right, so in terms of an update, where we stand, the windows are in, the. The windows are in, the roof is on, uh so we're almost weather tight. I have some pictures of the exterior that I took today that I was hoping to to project, um but uh we don't have those, so. I don't know if you've driven by. Has anyone checked it out all recently?
Yes, yeah, over the weekend.
Yeah, yeah, so we've got the the similar windows, the uh the two over two windows look very similar to what the old house had. And uh we hope to start um siding, uh hopefully next week. Siding uh amongst everything for materials these days with the supply chain uh is backwatered, so I'm hoping to get. Ten thousand linear feet of siding in um in the next week or so, so then we'll be siding the house and uh. And but the framing is uh just about done, windows and roof is on. Uh the only thing we haven't tackled on the exterior is the farmer's porch. Which we're gonna talk about today, so.
And the siding that you're getting is?
Is gonna be wood.
Okay.
Just checking. Just verifying.
Although it is easier nowadays and less expensive to get what used to be harder to get and more expensive. Which was the um the composite concrete hardy plank material. That looks like wood, acts like wood, uh harder to put up. But easier to get right now. Like we're gonna go forward with the uh with with wood. Um so in terms of the uh in regards to the um survey, so. The survey came out twice, uh didn't call me, went over, my guys saw him there, talked to him. He took some measurements, um but I've not heard from him since, uh and I've been able to reach him. It's the same art, same um surveyor that the town had hired when they owned the property and had done A to B land swap with um with UMass. So I figured it was best to use him, and he was very proactive and and receptive and all that, so I don't know, just everyone's busy. Construction industry right now, so I'm sure he's swamped, um but I hope to reach him and get the deliverable that he's told me he would be able to produce. Which is a certified um document that states the height of the building, so. That's update that. So unfortunately, I don't have it at this time, but it's a bit out of my control.
Did he, he didn't give you a date that he would get it to you by?
He he didn't, and I left him messages uh last week, uh and Monday and Tuesday of this week. Saying, Joe, I need the drawing for Wednesday night. It's um important and the town needs it, I need it, and I did not get a response.
Okay, cause I, cause you know, when when we last had you here three weeks ago, I had, and I'm sure the board assumed as well, that. That it would be here for this meeting. Um we didn't specify that if we didn't have it for this meeting, there would be, you know. Something that we'd have to take action in some way, shape or form, but I think, you know, it's been over five weeks. Since you had committed to getting a survey to us, and I I think, at least from my perspective, I feel like that's um. A long time for someone to just measure the height of the house, um and get you something that's certified, but. You know, um I'm just, I. I I, you know, we wanna, we, every every single time that that there's still deliverables that have to happen, you have to come back to us. Um and so, you know, I feel like we're having the same kind of conversation over again, so.
Well, I've got a lot to share today, so we got a lot more, which is uh in line with what we were talking about three weeks ago.
Yeah.
Uh however, I don't have that one item. Uh I will, I know where his office is, I know where he lives. Uh so I will um go knock on the door, hopefully can catch him in his office at some point. Uh I'll do everything I can to to try to speed things along. If I start over again with a new surveyor, the thing is, it's such a small job, right? These guys are so busy with massive projects and and other things, it's unfortunately high on my priority, but not so much on theirs.
Right.
Uh so I'm doing the best I can.
No, I know, I know, and so are we. So I think, you know, from my perspective, and I wanted to get the board's. Um input on this as well, I think that we need to set some parameters on on this, and if we. From my perspective, if we don't, if we don't have a survey by X amount of time, work is gonna need to stop, in my personal opinion, until we get that. Because that is like a critical piece, that's a critical piece for the porch, that's a critical piece for the entire structure, because. If if, you know, if it's too tall and it doesn't, it it. You know, then then we're gonna, we're gonna have to figure out what that means, that it doesn't mean that that the parameters change. The, you know, it means that something has to, that changes will have to be made to the house. Um so, you know, I don't know, I I I'm I'm. I'm extremely disappointed that we don't have a survey by this point.
Yeah, me too.
Yolanda.
I mean, I think specifically at our last meeting, I asked the question that if, when the survey comes and your house is too tall and you've already put the porch on. You have to then take the porch off and do something else, and you said you were willing to take that risk or whatever. I don't want you to have to take that risk. I don't want you to have to, I don't want us to have to say, okay, it's a foot taller or a half, whatever. It's taller than what it's supposed to be, so now you have to redo stuff, so.
Yeah, I, it is a risk. It's apparently all on me. Uh I I feel confident we're we're fine with the the dimension that uh. You know, was was stipulated, um so.
Was it twenty-seven feet? Am I correct on that?
Ten. So I will take a a uh more. I guess a next step, which is.
Aggressive step.
Aggressive, proactive and say, you need it.
Well, I've been proactive and and I've been aggressive, um you know, it's only, again, I mean, I'm gonna have to hunt the guy down, uh I guess. I mean, I don't know how much more aggressive I can get. I mean, it might, you know, it's construction and and people are busy. They're charging three times as much to do half the quality. It's it's tough industry right now. And you can't get these guys to jump through hoops, especially for something, you know, it's a four hundred dollar document.
You know, Paul, we 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 do get that. We're building two municipal buildings now, you know, a hundred million dollars worth of of the buildings. So we understand contractors and we understand subs and we understand the supply chain. And we understand delays and all that. We're dealing with that stuff.
Okay.
On on buildings. People make commitments, and I think that's where we need to uh, we need to, we need to press them. And uh so we we get all that, all that construction stuff.
Alright, then.
Paul, can you hire somebody else, like?
Yeah, then I start, I I guess, so I'll get, I'll I'll hedge my bets. I'll get another surveyor. In the meantime, I'll push for the current person to to perform. And uh hopefully he does, but I'll also have someone hopefully working in parallel to to do it as in addition to that.
If if he came out two or three weeks ago, I would, and it's what you're saying, it's supposed to be a simple, easy job.
Mm-hmm.
It it should be a simple, easy job, right?
So of putting, you know, whatever, yeah, putting fingers to keyboard and uh.
Yeah.
You know, transfer and over sketch and do do do.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So uh anyways, so uh understood, um urgency is is ratcheted up yet again. And I will make it happen for uh for the next meeting and and before the next meeting. If at all possible.
Yeah, I would, I would say the minute you get it, get it to Michael so that we can see it, cause then. I mean, we, you know, or we can give Michael the power to say, if it's the right height, he can, I mean, I'd be willing to, if it's the right height. You can, he can give you the approval to move forward, and if it's not the right height, you gotta stop. Right?
That's a bigger issue.
Isn't that, aren't those, I mean, that's the.
And I would also say, if you don't have, if you don't have this in the next two weeks when we meet again, I think work has to stop.
Okay.
Personally, I think, I think we need to prioritize things.
I think, you know, get it, I I I would, I don't want him to wait for the two weeks. I want him to keep pushing. And hopefully get it tomorrow or Friday or Monday and get it to Michael. And if it's the right height, you're good to go. If it's not the right height, I would vote to give Michael the approval to tell him to stop doing. What he's, you know, stop the work and we have to revisit the height.
Okay, I think we're.
Yeah. Well, it it sounds like we're all in agreement on that, so.
Alright, so let's move on to the, to the um, the the inside of the house.
Okay.
Paul, just to interrupt, I think you should be able to share your screen now.
Oh, perfect. Let's see what I'm able to do here. Okay, uh let me go full screen. Ah, how do I do that? Someone help me out. Which one am I gonna need to do here?
It should be in the slideshow.
Yeah. Yeah, where's slideshow?
It's on the top, like.
Oh, got it.
Nope, next, next menu down.
Yeah, I got it. There's a little icon at the top. Alright, well, here we go. So this was as of uh this afternoon. Um you see the building, windows are in, uh actually, this side, the roof wasn't done. Uh but in this side, whoops, too touchy with the screen. Page up. So here we are on the, on the side that faces Warren Center, um the farmer's porch, obviously it's, hasn't been touched, just sitting there. And we get the roof going on, so that's where we stand right now um with that. Alright, um. So uh this is gonna cover the ideas, proposed ideas for reusing. The reclaimed lumber that's been salvaged from uh the house during uh construction. And I wanna go through a couple of different ideas that have come up. So uh I have quite a bit of um of wall studs that came out of the old building. And what I propose doing is having those placed in the walls of the uh of the original part of the house. And the front part of the house that faces the street. And have them, like we see here, um going up the wall to the ceiling. In some places, I'll have horizontal, but mostly just po- uh studs acting as posts in the in the corners. Uh in other locations, um throughout the front part of the house, which is now one large, open living area. So that's uh, these posts measure roughly four inches by three, some are five by three. There're not a lot of uniformity. Uh back in the day, um but use up those beams for for that purpose, so. Basically, you'll walk in and when you see the corner of this room, you'll see, you know, a four by three poster or stud going from the floor up to the. Up to ceiling. I think it'd be a pretty good look. They do have some pegs, there's a lot of, you know, old nail holes in them. Um sometimes they have holes driven drilled through for the old wiring that went through. Uh so they got a lot of character and and neat characteristics. And uh trying to think where I can use some of the planking. I got a number of ideas for that. So off the farmer's porch is an entrance, which is gonna be sort of a mudroom. So I envision uh using some of that planking in a similar situation as this, where people, you know, own the home. Primarily me, possibly, uh where you come in and you you hang up, you know, coats and boots and all that. Including probably uh some wainscoting, and that probably, but you know, I wanna make it more definitive than probably. So adding wainscoting in that area as well, and then even perhaps uh using some of the planks. I don't really have any. Planks this thick. The planking on the outside of the house is mostly three quarter to one inch. Um but trying to do some sort of a bench or or place out of that type of lumber. Okay? So I have a number of larger uh beam, I guess they're beams, joists, uh that were salvaged. Which measure about four inches by four inches. So I envisioned putting those, you can see my cursor running here. So between, this this, say this room is the front part of the house, and then I'm standing what is now the the new addition part. Uh there's an eight foot section in between, uh cause there's a stairway going up to the left here. So right in this area, this picture actually depicts it pretty well, putting a a beam up there or maybe even making a bigger beam out of. Uh the joist that I salvaged and creating this sort of a look above. Uh and then even coming down on the left and right wall, uh so it looks like it's a framed entrance or framed passage. Going from one part of the house to the next, past the stairway, which is sort of like a hallway area where you come in from the farmer's porch. And uh and create that sort of look um between the two areas. So that's what I see there, you know, similar to what we have here and and here. I also, if I have, which I think I do, I uh I may even add, in the newer construction addition off the back. I have an area like this with a beam, um not a beam, but it's like a flat ceiling, but then above it. Is a, is a, is a um a shed roof, um which is to resemble the old. Uh three season porch, which used to be on the hall house, which had a flat roof, but now it angles. Uh in that transition area, between that family room and the kitchen, you know, add a beam above that as as well. It's not as long as this, but just put a beam up here to um, you know, have that same sort of uh look. Be almost like this above the kitchen island, between the kitchen island and this family room. So two uses of beams in the ceiling. So there's also quite a bit of planking, old planking. Uh so I was uh thinking about how to use that, talking to a number of different people about it, including my architect, and, you know. Everyone loves the accent walls, modern farmhouse, you see it on HGTV, they use a lot of planking for uh accent walls. So perfect area that I, is is in the house, it's going up the stairs, uh up to the front upstairs hallway, there's a window. So this sort of depicts that pretty well, um like an example I pulled off the web about how to use it um in the hall house. Perhaps in that front living area where the stairway goes up, if I have enough, I can use it here. And then also just an accent wall, not not a floating accent wall like this, uh won't be quite that large. But between, if you go back to the front pictures of the house, there's two windows in the front on the first floor. There's about four feet in between, and uh we envision putting a an accent wall in that space. Between those two windows. And then, you know, a host of other ideas, um. There's gonna be a fireplace. I do have a decent, decent, Tim, I think decent, it's got a lot of neat. Things going on with it, with uh pockets and pegs and everything else going on, so doing a a beam, yeah, you like the beam?
No, we're looking at the clock.
And I knew you, I knew everyone liked the clock.
The numbers are upside down at the bottom.
Cause it's Roman numerals, because they're Roman numerals. I think the clock is fine.
Sorry, go ahead.
I'm a big fan of the clock. So, of course, I, you know, I had a thousand pictures of beams of the fireplaces, but of course I picked the one with the clock.
No, it's good.
Yeah. And the numbers are upside down. I gotta look Facebook, right? So uh and then maybe, you know, above the kitchen island, using a leftover beam here to maybe mount the pendant lights. You know, shelving, little, little scotch lights or whatever, using it as a as a backing for scotch lighting. I can't guarantee we're gonna use all these ideas, but I'm open to trying to incorporate as much as we, as we can.
Can I just comment?
Yeah, oh yeah.
And I think that's the goal, as much of the reclaimed wood that can be used and shown and and reused, that it's not going to waste. It's, you know, it's beautiful wood, so as much as you can do with it would be good.
Yep, yep, it's um, wouldn't say it's beautiful, it's got a lot of character. Uh I was gonna bring a couple, couple pieces in, I can do it next time, and I didn't, you know, hope people would feel about lugging in, you know, small pieces, but. It's pretty battered, it's pretty, pretty beat up, um but I think we'll have the desired effect. Excuse me?
Beauties in the eye of the beholder. Someone may look at that and go, oh, that's gorgeous wood.
Pretty cool. I mean, it's gotta be power washed and and and, you know, whatever, but it, you know, I'm not gonna stain it, I'm not gonna sand it. It's gonna be as it is, gonna dress off the ends if they get cut, so they kinda look the same. Uh or look similar to the, to the long surfaces of the of the of the wood, so. Uh okay, so that's the last slide for using the reclaimed lumber, okay?
Looks good.
Alright. Uh so we talked about uh what we're gonna do with the farmer's porch. So this middle picture is the existing. Uh farmer's porch, so we've got plywood decking. So that's, that hasn't been there all that long. And we've got two by fours with, you know, two, one, one by one or one and a half by one and a half, uh ballisters. That hasn't been there that long. And this is finger joint pine over um six by six posts. So I'm thinking this whole thing has been here probably, you know, since the eighties, late seventies perhaps. Um the roof above um has it has the original lumber, uh framing lumber. All the white you see is been, you know, the porch, the house is redone at some point, they redid the porch. So I'm gonna try, and this is an example of a new one, which are very similar. You get, it's the same dimension. You get, it's the same dimensions, you've got a base molding, baseboard molding at the bottom, you've got crown on the top, crown on the top. So, I'm gonna replicate this for the columns. And I'm gonna use a, they're gonna be wood pine, pre-prime pine painted. So, it's gonna have to be maintained down the road. I would like to use a PVC rail and baluster system that you see that's for sale at Home Depot. It's just, you know, a lot less maintenance free and lasts longer, obviously. Looks the same, I'd like to try to do that. I'll replicate all this with new pine. And there's a little detail up here, which is like an inside molding, like almost like a crown in this area here. And then the soffit, and then the fascia. The structure for that, where the cursor is for the roof. So, we're gonna pull that off the house, disassemble it, and then reassemble it along with new wood to rebuild the roof. It's gonna be the same hip roof. And, you know, reuse a lot of that lumber in planking on the roof. And then rebuild everything underneath to replicate what we have here. Okay? I'm not, like not to use plywood, which is not really authentic to the house in the historical period it was built. I would like to use Trex on this surface, gray. This house across the street, it was a farmhouse style, has gray Trex. It looks pretty decent, you can't really see the decking here, but it's gray. And I'd like to use composite decking for the front porch. So, that is that. I covered everything here? Yep. And I think, oh, yeah. So, this is the old front door. It is in pretty rough shape. So, what I was proposing to do with this door to reuse it, I thought was pretty cool, it's unusual, 'cause you usually have something like this, where you have three or four panels on the bottom, and then the window. The window's sort of lowered a little bit, and you have a panel above. Couldn't find this door anywhere to buy nowadays. And what I'd like to do is I'm gonna reuse it inside the house, sort of this, you know, sliding barn door sort of thing.
That's cool.
And reuse that between the entrance way, mudroom, and the main part of the house. 'Cause it's heated space, so I don't have to worry about this thing having to retain heat or have any kind of insulation qualities. So, use it in that way.
Yeah, go ahead. So, you're just showing us how you might do it in the picture on the right, right? You're not gonna change the window or the wood or anything on the front door one?
Yeah, the door you see on the left, yeah, the door you see on the left, I'm gonna use-
Use it like in the right, okay, thank you.
As I'm using this on the right as an example, correct? Yeah. So, I think it'd be pretty cool to do that. I have the old door knocker, I took it off, 'cause I wanted to bring it home and strip it down. It hung right here, where you see green, this door used to be green, it was painted black. So, I'll strip this down, I've already started to strip the old corbels. I think I have that on here too. Yep. So, these are the corbels that are either side of the front door, holding up that little roof. They're very cool. And you can see here where I stripped them down to bare wood. They're gonna be painted white again, but it's just years and years of paint. It's probably three, four, five layers of paint on here, probably more than that. So, that's where those stand, and those will probably go on sometime in the next week or so.
And those are going where they were before?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so the front door, I'm gonna replicate, obviously the door will be different. But it had, you know, normally you see doors, they have like a glass side light on either side of it. Hall house did not have that. But it had this sort of like raised panel look that you might see in a door. But on either side of the door, narrow. And these were mounted sort of in the middle of that, up above, and then a scotch light below that. So, it'll be just like that for the recreation of this house.
So, a question on the farmer's porch. So, I don't have a copy of the preservation restriction document here. What was in there regarding, do you know what was in there regarding the farmer's porch? Like, is there anything that we need to technically approve? I mean, I know we're waiting, we're not gonna probably approve anything until we get the survey. But in general, I'm just trying to think this through, like what we need to-
Well, was this consistent with the drawings that you presented to the board, Paul?
It is, well, it depends on how you look at it. I mean, because I submitted drawings, they were approved. But then there's all sorts of details. So, the drawings don't contain the detail, like what is to be used, you know, to reuse the lumber. So, these are all things we're talking about now that need to be added or, you know, incorporated into it. But yes, the size of the porch, the roof, you know, the look of the porch is as it was in the drawings that were submitted to the town.
So, you know-
But the details of all that and what goes into it was, you know, not in any of those preliminary drawings.
So, you know, the preservation restriction states that the old lumber will be used and will be supplemented with new lumber where it's appropriate. So, you know, I think if you could submit a drawing that is consistent with that, and show, you said the old lumber is at the top?
In the roof.
Yeah. And show that you're consistently, you're using that? And what your new lumber that you're putting in there is actually just stabilizing what's currently there? You know, to me, that would be consistent. I would like for some piece of this building to reflect, you know, what was in the document in terms of utilizing the old framing, utilizing the old lumber. I mean, that's me personally. I would just like something to do that, because we, you know, we've lost that opportunity with everywhere else, frankly. That's my opinion.
Does anyone have any comments, questions? Yolanda?
Well, I go back and forth, right, in regards to, you know, he wants to use PVC for the railing, and he wants to use Trex for the decking. I go back and forth, right, from a perspective of, is it going to look the same? Yes, is it gonna, you know, similar to, with the siding, we're saying we want it wood. I can't decide, and this is me just being indecisive, right? Do we push him and say, "No, it has to be wood, it has to be," rather than the PVC, rather than the Trex? I'm being indecisive, and I'll admit to that, that I don't know if I wanna push him and say, "No PVC, no Trex, it has to be real wood." Or, from a maintenance perspective, if it's gonna look the same, I mean, at this point, yes, I think as much wood as can be saved on the porch in regards to the roof line and the poles and stuff. So, I go back and forth as to whether or not we should push him or not.
Well, I think the timeframe has to be considered here.
Right, that's the other thing.
You talked about the farmer's porch being circa nineteen eighty?
The lower portion of it, yeah. The lower, not the roof was the only, the roof is the only-
Right, the roof is the only-
Frame and planking under the shingles.
But the plywood-
Everything else is circa nineteen seventy.
Is there wood under the plywood? Like, is there wood planking under the plywood that's original?
No, no. When you go underneath, you see the bottom of the plywood.
So, at some point in time, that was refurbished. Whatever year it was, nineteen seventy, nineteen eighty, all that, the plywood flooring, all of the ballisters, all of that. So, in my mind, it makes perfect sense to use current materials to refurbish that. Maintaining, you know, whatever is, has some historic value to it, because that clearly, the plywood does not have any historic value.
No.
So, let's make it as, I guess, New England-friendly as we can.
Well, I mean, I was referring specifically to the roof rafters.
And I think we all agree with that, and I think Paul's spoken to that.
What is supporting the plywood? Like, what are the joists underneath?
It's like two-by-eights that run, it's really weird, they run long way. It's very unstable. People have walked on that thing for years. They don't, normally they come out of the perpendicular, out from the house. These run like parallel to the wall of the house. And there's a supported midway, and then at one end, you know, three different places along the length are supported by a member that comes, you know, out from the house. And they're, you know, same timeframe, they did the plywood, they must have reframed it. And so, it's a hodgepodge of, you know, this may be one of the sills, the outer part of the beam that holds, you know, underneath the ballisters, might be an older piece of lumber. You know, we could try to use that.
Well, it seems to me-
But it all needs to be reframed.
Seems to me the priority is really to utilize what has historic value to it, and to maintain the look of the original porch. And I think that's really what we should be satisfied with.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Just to put a little additional information on there, I was an employee at the Warren Center camp in the early seventies. And the camp counselors used that location for their summer stay. So, the porch itself-
Explains all the beer cans I found.
It wasn't mine. If there was wine, then it'd be a different story. The farmer's porch and that wooden floor area was, it was replaced because one of the camp counselors went through. So, when that happened, the folks that were involved and the maintenance folks put new plywood. So, you're right, it was in the mid, early seventies, seventy-one as a matter of fact. That's when we started working this, so that's little-known history. And I'll be quiet now.
Thanks for that, Julie, that's interesting.
So, and just from my perspective, I agree, I think I agree with Steve. I think that, you know, for the, you know, whether, for, to replace the plywood with Trex and PVC for the rails, I'm okay with it. But I also, you know, I agree with Michael that, you know, the priority is really, you know, keeping the old rafters and, you know, adding to that versus taking that down. And that's something that you can commit to doing, right?
So, and it's in a sketch, I'll do a sketch, it's gonna be pretty simple. I mean, we're gonna take the roof off, take off all the old shingles, pop off all the planking, disassemble one by one all the rafters that come off the house. And we're gonna trace them onto new lumber, we're gonna sister them together, nail them back up. So, every old piece will have a new piece next to it, all the way along. The, if we can reuse the old beam, I gotta talk to, I guess Doug Scott, or my general contractor, doesn't really meet code. So, I don't know, we have to probably put a bigger piece of, you know, this beam up here, you know, typically you see up here is, you know, I gotta make sure it's thick enough, it meets all the codes. If I can reuse that, I will. But the rafters that go on a diagonal, on the hip roof, those diagonal, those rafters as well, and the valley in between that forms, the piece of wood that forms that, will reuse, and it'll be sistered up with a new piece of lumber, just to make sure we, it's gonna continue to, it'll last another hundred and fifty years.
Can you go back to the picture from today that shows the side of the house that had the porch on it?
Sure.
Can I interject here? I'm sorry. I looked at the preservation restriction, I should have pulled it up when you asked me that question. If you look at the restoration plan under Exhibit F, it says the side farmer's porch to be replicated in like-kind to original and painted white.
So, I think we're on track.
So, that's the direction.
So, that verifies what we've discussed.
In fact, you could argue it doesn't, the whole thing can be replicated in like-kind, but we're gonna not do that and save the roof. So, we're going beyond the preservation agreement.
Well, except that if you read that, like-kind would be wood, but-
True, yeah.
But I think, I think-
You know, I mean, the preservation agreement is far from perfect. And I think this is all about understanding what we want it to be and how we want it to be. We're kinda after the fact on a lot of this, obviously. But we've come together, and I think we're working well. I mean, there's gonna be compromises, but as long as it ends up being something that we can all be proud of, I think we'll be fine.
Agreed.
Agreed, okay. Does anybody else have any questions, comments? You good? Okay, alright. So, so deliverable for the next meeting is-
What is it again?
Yeah.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding!
And again, I would say before the next meeting, as soon as possible.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna not rest until I get a hold of Surveyor and get that. Did we wanna talk about the kiosk sign thing?
Not tonight.
Not tonight.
Tonight, okay.
I think this is a lot.
Okay.
And the kiosk is not quite so important to the actual construction of the site, so-
Alright, it was something that was on, that was emailed and told to be prepared to talk about it.
Okay, okay.
But I'm happy to wait on that.
Okay.
Do we wanna consider giving Michael the authority? If Paul receives that information sooner or later, and he provides it to Michael, and it meets the parameters of the height requirements that we're looking for, to let Michael give the okay with respect to that, instead of having it wait two weeks? So, that doesn't delay Paul from doing work that needs to be done?
Yeah, what I said at the beginning.
Yeah, I'm okay, I'm okay with that.
I just wanted to bring it back up, is that they didn't hear it, settling down and on product.
Yeah, so if we, yeah, if the survey comes in and everything's good, and, you know, you don't have to wait until our next meeting to get approval.
But if it's over what the requirement is, Michael's gonna give you a stop work order.
Okay.
Okay.
So, in lieu of a kiosk, do you have room for a Gaga, Paul P? Just kidding.
I'm not sure, no, I have young, well, you're beyond, I know what a Gaga court is, so I, my kids miss that. I just barely know what pickleball is at this point. Yeah, I gotta look it up. Nothing to do with Lady Gaga, right?
No, no.
So, do we need to take a vote on that, or are we okay with just, okay, we're good? Okay, alright.
You know what, let's take a vote. I move that if Michael, when Michael gets the survey results from Mr. Gustafson, if they are at the correct height, he can give them a continue work order. If they are above the correct height, he can give him a stop work order.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, passes four zero one. So, we're good to go, okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on in our agenda, the next item is review draft letter to the MBTA in Keolis regarding capital improvements to the Ashland commuter rail station. I had drafted a letter, which I think is in your packets. I did get an email from Rob, who couldn't be here today, who just made the suggestion that he get added to the bottom as the MBTA advisory board person, so we will, we will-
Yeah, this looks good.
Okay, does anyone have any?
No, thank you for drafting it, that's good.
And just for the benefit of people that are watching this evening, so, on behalf of the town and the Metro West Regional Collaborative, which Yolanda is the chair of, we are signing a letter to go to Steve Poftak, the MBTA general manager, as well as the CEO of Keolis, Adam Camune, the MBTA intergovernmental affairs person, Brian Kane, the executive director of the MBTA advisory board, Senate President Karen Spilka, and Representative Jack Lewis. And basically, in summary, the letter summarizes the site visit that the select board had hosted on March twenty-second, where we walked through the site with Mayor Thomas Koch of Quincy, who's the MBTA board member, Brian Kane from the executive director of the MBTA advisory committee, Ed Carr from Metro West Regional Transportation Authority, Dennis Giambetti from Senate President Spilka's office, and Frank Tramazani, the Quincy Public Works Director, and also on the MBTA advisory board. So, they had noted the extreme rust and deterioration of the site, and we are asking for consideration to be added to the MBTA's capital investment plan. One of the things that I just wanted to just note in the letter, you know, we, because we are one of the largest- we are one of the largest, we have one of the larger parking lots in the Metro West area, we draw from other towns, which is one of the reasons that the, the, the Metro West Regional Collaborative is supporting this, because not only is it Ashland, it's Hoppington and Holliston, and Southborough and Marlborough, and probably many other communities as well. And so, when I was looking at the MBTA's capital investment plan, their five-year plan, there is major investment that's happening all along the, this particular commuter rail line and not just in Boston. They had, they've done a lot of work in Natick Center and Framingham, and we've also, there's also planned work in Auburndale, West Newton, Newtonville, Wellesley Farms, Wellesley Hills, Wellesley Square, and West Natick. And so we are asking to be added to the, to the list as well, because our, our train station can't last.
Not in the condition that it's, yeah.
Correct.
And all it takes is one lawsuit, and then we'll be added to that because it's in town. So, but I will, I will say that this past week, there was a, a dump truck, and they were filling it with whatever needed to be removed. They were removing it, so Sanford and Son is slowly, you know, making its way out of town.
Really?
Yeah.
All right, so if, if the board is, is good with this letter as drafted, could I get a motion to approve? And then, I will sign on behalf of the select board and Yolanda will sign on behalf of the-
I move that we approve the MBTA commuter rail letter as drafted by Chair Kinsman, and that it gets sent out on our behalves.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
And thank you for doing it.
Yes, thank you.
Not a problem, that passes four zero one. And Rob, we are thinking of you and the MBTA, and all the work that you do on the advisory board. Okay. Next on our agenda is review the changes to the comprehensive plan process as proposed by the planning board. So, we had received sort of a, 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 a much condensed draft, so thank you, I see Tricia Kendall on here, that was put together by, by, by Tricia, that really kind of boiled down the, the agreement, the, the plan that, that Michael had put together, and then some of the things that we had agreed to, and then what the planning board had discussed at their last meeting. So I thought if we could go through some of those, some of those changes and see if we can get agreement from, from our board of how we wanna proceed with these, and then I would suggest, well, I'll suggest what the next steps would be after we kind of get through this, but, so thank you to Tricia for, for doing this, it's a much simplified, a much simplified document, so thank you. So on this comprehensive plan document, when we look at the project management team, one of the things that our board had proposed back to the planning board, which we hadn't gotten consensus at during our joint meeting, was that the project management team membership will consist of two planning board members, two select board members, the town manager and the town planner, and then, so that was agreed upon by the planning board, so we are good to move forward on that. Under the steering committee, one of the, one of the changes that Tricia had included was that the steering committee will consist of eighteen to twenty-four members of the Ashland community, so it gives us sort of a targeted number of how many people we want to make sure we include in the steering committee. We have listed quite a few boards and committees down below, but this kind of gives us some flexibility if there's more residents that want to, want to, like, at-large residents, so. And, so is that, is that, does that sound good?
First paragraph is fine.
Okay. The only thing-
The first paragraph of-
Under membership.
Under membership.
Okay, now I have a question. And in terms of being consistent with the concept of residents versus registered voters, we've got residents, steering committee will also include residents at large, but we have on top at the first paragraph, registered voters. Now, my own personal opinion is that it should be residents across the board, because, you know, just because you're a registered voter, A, doesn't mean that you vote, and B, doesn't mean that you participate. Meanwhile, we've got many residents that can't legally vote, but are great volunteers and participants, so I think it should be residents across the board.
Okay.
Yep, that's a good point, Steve.
I, I agree, I think, 'cause Michael and I were talking about this earlier, and I think when, when, if I remember correctly, and Tricia, you're, you're welcome to, to pipe in, because, you know, this is, this was a conversation that you and I had, that I think that language had initially, you had, you had pulled that from, I don't know if it was a bylaw or the charter, and that's where that, the registered voters' language comes from. Tricia, you, go ahead, you could go ahead. She was there. Oh, there she is, you're still muted, my friend.
I did not actually hear the first part of what you said, because I just jumped, I, I thought you were past this in your agenda, I got mixed up about where you were.
No, I'm sorry. We were just talking about the steering committee membership and the changes that, that, that the planning board had looked at, and one of the things that you had put at the membership was that all steering committee members will be registered voters in Ashland, and I remember having a conversation with you of where that language came from.
Yeah, I, I have to, I remember looking it up when I was finding people interested for like the design review committee, and so I might have to look it up again, if it's bylaws or state laws, but everyone on an appointed committee has to be a resident, or a registered voter in Ashland, yeah. I'd have to, I'd have to look up the source again, I didn't-
Yeah, so I had actually brought this point up to Brandy earlier, and so Brandy did, you know, also say that maybe it was in the bylaws that it had to be a registered voter. So I went and checked, at least the online version, and it just said residence, I think it's eight point one, section F. I'm happy to double-check it again, though.
Yeah, could you, yeah.
Yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to go, you know, look, I'd have to go look myself.
Michael's checking it now, Tricia.
Okay, yeah, where that was. I remember being surprised at how strict it was, I remember it saying it, they needed to be on the Ashland voter registration list.
Oh, wow, okay.
Yeah, so, 'cause I did have one person that was interested in serving on a committee, but he said he, I checked into it, he's, he, he was registered to vote in another state, even though he lived here, but he wasn't interested in changing his voter registration, so he just, he had to pass. So that was something I was unfamiliar with at the time, but I, I could not, I'd have to, I could not say where I found that information.
I, I would like to suggest that if we can, we make it just residents, 'cause to Steve's point, we have had residents that are not voting because they can't vote, but who do a lot of good in town.
Okay, all right. So, Tricia, just I think, I think what we'll do is, is mark up this document with, with our feedback, and then we'll talk kind of like next steps, so.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so all steering, we'll, we'll mark this up as all steering committee members will be residents in Ashland, and that's dependent on making sure that that's-
Legally allowed.
That's legal, yeah.
Yeah, I did just check, and at least the one online, under, under the charter, section eight dash one, section F, it states here, "All appointed multiple-member body members shall be residents of the town unless otherwise specifically provided."
Okay, okay, all right. Okay. So, the next paragraph talks about, based on input from town boards and committees, the, "Once appointed, the steering committee, including the previously established project management team, shall self-organize by electing a chair, vice-chair, and clerk." I know when we had met with the joint meeting, like, I thought, I'm kind of surprised that this change was, was, was done, 'cause I thought that was something that we had all-
We had had a major discussion that the members of the project management team would not be the, any of the chair, vice-chair, or whatever of the steering committee. So I would like to recommend the language that we strike the words, "including the previously established project management team," strike those completely, "shall self-organize by electing a chair, vice-chair, and clerk," and note that the town manager and the, and note that the project management team are not eligible for these positions, and the town manager and town planner will be non-voting members of the steering committee. 'Cause my understanding, and I actually had a discussion with a member of the planning board, and they were like, "Yeah, I remember that as well," that it was said that the project management team would not be in the roles, would be eligible or in any of those leadership positions of the steering committee.
Okay.
So, a question though, to strike that, where does it say that the project management team is part of the steering committee?
So it says, "Once appointed, the steering committee," on the third line, "including the previously established project management team, shall self-organize by electing a chair, vice-chair, and clerk." And then it goes on to say, "Note that the town manager and the town planner are not eligible for these positions." It doesn't say that the project management team is not eligible for these positions.
Well, I'm just, I'm reading, "Once appointed, the steering committee-"
Including-
Including the previously established project management team. Now you, what are you striking, though?
The words, "including," well, okay, maybe I shouldn't strike that, 'cause they-
'Cause now you're, you're deleting the project management team, so including, if you just say, "Including the, the project management team, shall self," you know, the, it, it actually says up on top here, "The project management team will be, become part of the steering committee," so now that's redundant. All you have to do is self-organize the steering committee.
Right, but I think the part then that I wanna emphasize is, it's saying that the town manager and the town planner are not eligible for these positions, and I would like to say that in our discussion, the project management team is not eligible for the positions of chair, vice-chair, and clerk.
That's, that was the last, so from, from our last discussion, that's what our position was.
Correct, right, and that's what I-
This is the change, and you're against?
I'm against the change of the project management team being allowed to be part of the, be either the chair, vice-chair, or clerk.
Okay, and what, what's the rationale for that?
Because one of the, part of the discussion we had was, it was felt that we needed to have the residents driving more of this, and if a select board or planning board member is in the chair and vice-chair position, I think they're gonna have a little more pull in some of the decisions, and I think if it's a resident at large, or one of the members from these other committees as the chair and vice-chair, that gives more of a, it makes it seem like we're including the residents more, rather than there's a planning board or select board being in those lead positions. And that's based on our discussion, and I, I feel that that is something we need to continue, that that's, that's a good thing to do.
Okay, I, I, personally, I'm okay with this change. I think it's, you know, I think any entity should self-organize in the best way that it can and put the, the appropriate right people in a place depending on that committee. So, I'm not in favor of, of denying anybody an opportunity to, if that is the right person to manage the, the process, so I'm actually okay with, with this change.
So you don't want the project management team-
Eliminated.
-to be excluded from being in the leadership of the steering committee?
Joe, what do you think?
I'm torn. Yeah, Chair, to be very honest with you. We had that monthly discussion during the joint meeting, and rereading this, this verbiage again, I'm still a little torn between the fact that the project management team and it's, the members that are, that have been listed, will have no actually, no voting rights at all in, in, in any, in any say with respect to this.
No, I'm not removing, I don't recommend removing the project management team from voting rights.
No, but those that are included, now it says that the project management team shall have the town manager and the town planner, but in this, this wording, in this paragraph, "The previously established project management team will self-organize," and note that the town manager and the town planner are not eligible for any of these positions. So isn't that kind of-
Well, you don't want the town manager or the town planner in the chair or vice-chair position, you want residents in those positions.
Well, that, that's fine, but do they have, do they have a, a vote in, in, in this at all? No, so there'd be no vote, right? Okay, that's where I was getting confused.
Yeah, they're just non-voting members of the-
There's just non-voting members.
And I think Peter had said that that was pretty typical.
And he was typical, right?
Right.
Okay, that, that's what I remember, so that's where I was getting confused. I mean, if, if that's the case, then I, then I'm, I'm, I'm fine with the way it's, the way it was being presented.
You know, my perspective is, I was just surprised that the change was, change was made based on the conversation that we had. You know, I, I honestly, you know, if there's eighteen to twenty-four people in this committee and they feel that, you know, however they want to vote for chair, vice-chair, and clerk, you know, I, I, I hear what you're saying, Yolanda, 'cause I do, like, I, I-
Well, and I just think about the conversation that we had when we were sitting here, we all were saying that it didn't make sense for the, either the two planning board members or the two select board members to be the chair. As part of the project management team, they can help make sure the project moves forward, but the idea is to have more inclusion and more power and control given to the residents that are part of this. So, by allowing them, you know, and certainly, the mem, the members of the project management team can vote and be part of this, right? I mean, except for the town manager and the town planner can vote who the chair is, but it's the idea that the members of the project management team will not be in those positions. So, and I guess, really, the, the, the thing that would, so not, so the really thing that needs, that I would recommend the change is, note that the town man, that note that the project management team are not eligible for these positions, meaning chair, vice-chair, and clerk, and the town manager and town planner will be non-voting members of the steering committee. So that would be the change that I recommend in that last sentence.
Do you think we can, we might be able to put in some language, instead of like excluding the, the project management team from, from the, the leadership, maybe we give preferential, like, you know, with, with a preference to someone else outside of the project management team leading the, like, you know, I, I-
You have a, you know, an entity should be self, they should self-organize depending on their, you know, the personalities, the dynamics, and so on, I think, you know, it's hard to, I think it's hard to, you know, pre-convene a committee in, in that way, and this is a, it's a big committee, and it may be, you know, I mean, you know, Yolanda, you've, you've chaired big groups of people, you know it's a challenge to do that.
Oh, yeah.
You know, not everybody can do that.
Right.
Right, and not any necessarily resident can walk into a situ, situation like that and, and really manage and be comfortable with it. So, you know, I think the best person should be the one that is, is, becomes the chair, I mean, depending on, you know, based on the committee's decision. I, the only change I would make, you know, really is, "Once appointed, the steering committee shall self-organizing by electing a chair, vice-chair, and clerk." You don't need to have that sentence again, it's redundant.
Right, so, so, yeah, I, you struck it for a different reason, and I agree, because it says that the project management team is part of the steering committee.
Tricia, I, I see you have your hand up, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Oh, yeah, I would, I was just going to, kinda Steve was making the same point, I think, I, I think for one thing, that, though I remember, I recall the, the conversation about the leadership for the steering committee in the same way, but I've come to understand that maybe there's, you know, maybe there was really just a misunderstanding during that conversation, that people may have been talking in cross purposes, I'm not sure.
Probably.
Because I was kind of, in getting to where we were on this document, yeah, it, it seems different from, from what we arrived at, so I'm not sure where that misunderstanding took place, but really in looking at it, I felt like where Steve landed, that this is going to be a huge job, it's going to be a very complex role to guide this committee, and my fear- be a huge job, it's going to be a very complex role to guide this committee, and my fear was that by eliminating people from the planning board and the select board, who are all likely capable, maybe not willing, but likely capable of leading such an endeavor, you know, maybe you just wouldn't, maybe you would have a lot of really great people on that steering committee, but no one who really, really wanted to step up and, and do it. And so I think having the ability to have a select board member or a planning board member step up to, to, to make sure that role is, those roles are filled, was my concern.
Okay. Okay. I just, I'm glad we had the discussion.
Yeah.
I think it's important to have it, and because of how different it was based on our last discussion.
Yes.
So, okay, that's fine.
All right. Uh, thank you, Tricia. Okay, so moving on, so we're, we're okay with the, with that-
Yep.
-language, we'll strike out the-
Just including the previously established, yeah, because that's, as Steve said, is redundant.
Okay. Um, the only other thing that I have on this page, where it says, "Members from Ashland Boards and Committees," it says, "Note that the list is not exclusive." I think it's supposed to be exhaustive, you know, just a, you know, it's-
Right.
Yeah, so that's, I think, just a, just a typo there. Does anyone else have any comments on anything else on this particular page?
Yes, I'd like to comment. We got an email from a resident, and sometimes we look at emails from this person, and we might dismiss them, but they made a good point in that when we're looking at our at-large residents, that we consider getting a person from each precinct of our voters, which I would then say either bump this to six, or, you know, or leave the four, but make sure that those four residents are from different precincts, different voting precincts, because they represent very different areas in town. If you're someone who lives up on Apple Ridge, and you're someone who lives on Pond Street, you're in a different voting red, you're in a different voting precinct, and you're going to be looking things slightly differently. So I would just like to recommend that be reserved for residents at large members of four or six various precincts, voting precincts.
That's, that's actually a very good idea, and I certainly, you know, four or six, you know, this is a big committee as it is, so I would say, you know, let's bump it to six, we've got six precincts, and-
Great.
Right?
Yep.
So, I do have one question, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry. The student from Ashland High, is that student going to be part of the student council, or is that a student at large at the high school?
I think to be determined.
Yeah, I, I think we would work with the superintendent on the best way to identify somebody, if-
And the principal, and say, you know-
Right, well, that, that's why I'm asking, because that, you know, there's, you have freshmen, seniors, you know, sophomores and juniors, so, you know, what, what, what age group are you looking at?
Well, I would say, considering this is going to be a two-year process, I don't know that, you know, or, or it might be a stu, it might be a revolving student, right? It might not be the same student, which I think for some of these other ones, it might be the same thing, it might not be the same-
I mean, this would be a tough load for a kid.
No, I, I don't disagree, that's why, that's why I asked.
So we have to modify that last sentence if we're going to make that change. A minimum of six seats on the steering committee will be reserved for residents at large with representation-
One from each voting precinct is whatever.
With representation from each of the six voting precincts.
Yep.
Okay, I think that's a great idea. Okay. Moving on to the second page, unless anybody else has any-
No.
-comments on that.
Second page seemed fine to me.
So I think the only thing that, that we may want to take a look at is the drafting phase and approval process. The, I believe the, the planning board made some changes to the last paragraph here about, like, the, because it says, "The select board will vote on the plan, followed by the planning board. Assuming the final comprehensive plan has been endorsed by the planning board, it will then be presented to town meeting for approval and adoption." Does anyone have any comments?
Yeah, I do. I have an alternate way of saying basically the same thing, but not as kind of disjointed. "The planning board and the select board will vote on the final plan, and once approved by both boards, the comprehensive plan will be submitted to town meeting for approval and adoption."
Okay. The one thing I might add, and if you guys, because I know that one of the things that Anna was, was strongly, you know, strongly felt, her, her opinion, strong opinion on was the Massachusetts statute about how DHCD is notified based on the, you know, because the planning board votes, maybe adding something at the end, "Per Massachusetts statute," following the, the endorsement of the planning board, this will be sent to DHCD, or something along those lines.
Maybe after, after it's approved by town meeting-
Tell me.
The planning board will then submit the, the completed comprehensive plan to DHCD.
Okay.
Yeah, just as simple as that. And that's the statutory requirement.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think practically, you know, you're submitting this to two different entities, one town meeting, the other is DHCD, and I think everybody is probably more concerned with submitting it to town meeting, but you do mention that statutory requirement, so like you said, maybe, maybe the planning board has a separate vote after the town meeting vote to officially submit it to DHCD.
Yeah, I think an additional sentence, just acknowledging their, their statutory requirement to submit to the state.
Okay. All right. That sounds good. Does anyone else have any comments, or?
So, could you just read the last paragraph with the-
So Steve had a good-
Yeah, we amended change.
So it would read, "Once all revisions are complete, the final comprehensive plan will be presented to the planning board and the sele, select board during a joint meeting. The planning board and the select board will vote on the final plan, and once approved by both boards, the comprehensive plan will be submitted to, to town meeting for approval and adoption." Then we're also adding, "Once town meeting has, when town meeting has, has approved and adopted, the planning board will submit, however you want to phrase that, Brandy."
Okay.
Submit to DHCT per-
Per Massachusetts.
Per, per the statutory requirement.
Yep. Okay. That works.
Yep.
All right. Everybody good with that?
Tricia, are you still there? I just want to see if Tricia has any thoughts on the recommendation that we're sending back. Right? Because they put some thought into this, so I want to make sure that it's something the plan, that Tricia thinks the planning board would support.
Tricia, can you hear us? Oh, okay.
She's moving.
Sorry. Sorry. Didn't mean to catch you at a bad time.
But you looked so comfy in that chair.
The family has moved into that room.
Ah, okay.
Your kick down.
I had to, I had to move out right, right at that time. Um, yeah, I mean, in a way, I, I, I really think we're just getting too much in the weeds here. Like, from my point of view, no matter what the order is, if the select board doesn't endorse it, it's not going to pass town meeting. If the planning board doesn't endorse it, it's not going to pass town meeting.
You're right.
Right? Because it's just going to, the town's just going to see that disunity, it's just, it's just not going to, it's just not going to work. So, this, what, three-sentence paragraph was trying to make it just extremely simple, that there's a joint meeting, the select board will vote on it first and take a vote, the planning board will vote on it, and, and then it goes on to town meeting. So, yes, it, it is a point of importance, I'll, I'll say for Anna, I think everybody knows that, given the, what she really sees is a, a mandate by the Mass General Law, and it's true, it, it is there under planning board, it's not there under anybody else. And, and, and so there's a type of responsibility of stepping up, I guess, to that responsibility. And I thought this phrasing of, and this ordering, this simplicity of it, just gave what I saw, I guess, is a very small nod to the planning board. So, that's my, that's my take on it.
Okay.
I, I think with that response, then I would like to recommend we just leave the language and just add the, the DHCD part after town meeting. That's what I would recommend.
I, I would, I would like to add to the last sentence that was, that was here, assuming the final comprehensive plan has been endorsed by the planning board and select board, it will then be presented to town meeting. I think that, I think, I think it going to town meeting is, is a, is a joint undertaking versus the planning board.
Yeah, I, I think, well, Tricia just explained that.
Yeah.
If it's, it has to be endorsed by both, right?
Right.
So, assuming the final comprehensive plan has been endorsed by both-
Yeah.
-the planning board and the select board, it will then be presented.
Yeah.
So that makes more sense. And then I think, to go to Tricia's point, an acknowledgement about the statutory requirement of the planning board to submit to the state, I think we should include that.
Okay.
So if we want to, so, under, assuming the final compre, comprehensive plan has been endorsed by the, by both, I would say, the select board and the planning board-
Either way.
Right? So that the planning board is the last one voting, I think that's what we're-
Okay.
Okay. Okay, that works.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll, we'll mark this up, we'll send it back to the planning, to the planning board.
Yeah, if we can get that to them, if we can get it to Peter first thing in the morning, because I know they're talking about it briefly in their meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
We can do that.
We can do that? Okay. You have all the changes? Yep, okay. All right. And then, do we think we need to have a joint meeting with the planning board at our next meeting?
I think we, yeah.
To just kind of tie all this up?
I think we invite them to our select board meeting, because I think their meetings are very full.
Yeah.
You know, make it the first thing on our agenda, and-
Okay.
Yeah, and just sort of, again, come together to say, okay-
Univocal.
Yep.
We're, we, we want to do this, we want to work collaboratively, we want to make this happen.
Okay. All right, sounds good. So Tricia, just for your, your information, our next meeting is on the, the twenty-sixth, so we'll make sure that we, we put it on the, the front end of our agenda, but we'll, we'll confirm all that with you guys.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Tricia.
And thank you for putting, thank you for putting this together, because it was a much more simplified way to, to frame up the comprehensive plan, so nothing to take away from, from the work that Michael did, but this is, this, I appreciate, I appreciate both of the work that you guys did on this, so, so thank you.
No problem.
Okay. Moving on on our agenda, discuss creating the Public Safety Building Naming Subcommittee. I think it was in August that we had met, and we had approved as a board the, the Public Safety Building Naming Policy.
Yep.
And, and we had talked about establishing a subcommittee, and the subcommittee would be from, it will consist of the, the police chief, the fire chief, and at least one member of the Ashland community. And we put out a request to the public to see if there were folks that wanted to serve on this, on this subcommittee. We had received two, two talent bank forms, which were in our packets, so I, I think at this point, we can talk about the process. We, we don't have any names on our agenda tonight, so we can't do a formal appointment, but we can talk about if we want to appoint, we had, we had Alex Keefe and, and Izzy Esicoa that had wanted to serve on this, on the subcommittee, so. Steve, do you have thoughts?
Yeah, well, we have, you know, certainly, we've, we've got sufficient number to appoint the committee, right? We need a minimum of one resident plus the, the chief, two chiefs. So I would suggest we, we put it on the next meeting to appoint at least the two residents, the two, and the, and the chiefs.
Yep.
And then continue to keep it open if there's other residents that would like to-
Okay.
-participate, it's still available, and, but at least we have a, you know, we've had a couple requests, we probably should start that process.
Okay. And just so folks are aware, this isn't a naming of the actual building, the building is the Ashland Public Safety Building, this is, whether it's specific memorials, or benches, or trees, or rooms within the Public Safety Building, that, that there's a request to name, name them after certain individuals.
And one of the things we're working on as well is a pro, a program for, you know, there's, there's three benches that are on, on the grounds, and there's nine trees that would be, that are considered appropriate for, for dedication purposes. So we're, this committee is creating a, a program for either individuals or organizations to dedicate that particular tree and/or bench.
Okay. Thank you, Yolanda.
One thing I would like to recommend, I believe when we were setting this up, there was, we had said that they would be, we would create the subcommittee like every time there was a request, and I had recommended that we create the subcommittee to be in place for six months to do requests.
Okay, yep.
Um, which way are we going? Are we creating a subcommittee that's going to be in place for six months? Because certainly I would think that as the building is opening, we might get more requests, rather than every time we get a request, having to recreate the committee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, why don't we just, would we appoint, we, we put a timeframe in-
Okay, good.
That's your recommendation, and then we can also extend their, their appointment, right?
If necessary, okay, perfect. Thank you.
Because some people may not be willing to take a year or whatever.
Yeah.
Right, so maybe we should go back to these two volunteers and say, are you willing to serve for, for six months or something? That might be good. Okay.
Okay, so we'll plan it in six months.
So we'll vote that at our next meeting.
Yeah, we'll vote at the next meeting.
Okay.
All right. Does anybody else have any other?
So, the two individuals that applied, should they be present for the meeting, if there are any questions to be asked? Or should they?
We can offer it up.
Yeah, they can zoom in.
Zoom in, or come in person, one of the two?
Yeah.
Fine.
Okay. All right. We already talked about the Gaga pit.
Warrant for special town meeting is what we're up to.
Discuss warrant for special town meeting. Michael, Jen?
All right, let me, let me get to it here. Oops. So, just reviewing the articles that we have, it's, it's a little bit lighter compared to previous, previous town meetings, especially fall town meetings. So that's, that's not necessarily a bad thing or a good thing, but it's something that is a little bit unusual. I'll just run through the articles. So Article One is free cash transfer. So we would be, I'll just go through this, through each of the line items, so we would be putting, per our financial policies, we would be putting eighty thousand dollars towards the general stabilization fund, five hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars towards the OPEB trust fund. Capital, which has been deferred from May town meeting, we would appropriate eight hundred and six thousand to that. We would put a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-three for the Valentine Barn Restoration Project. So if you remember, we've got ARPA funds dedicated to that, we have CPA funds, but we needed to close a gap between what the price was and what we had, so this will do that for us. We've got two hundred and fifty thousand going towards the Mendez School Building Project, let me just explain that, again, we, we talked about it earlier. So, the schools had made a decision to put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of their own, their own appropriated funds towards the Mendez School Project to address a funding gap there. So instead of just taking it, it would have been complicated to take it from their budget at that point in time. What they did is they let two fifty fall to free cash with the understanding that it would be appropriated at the, at the fall town meeting. And then two hundred and fifty thousand towards the comprehensive plan, we discussed.
So do we not need to put anything in the Special Education Special Purpose Stabilization Fund?
Nope, because it is currently- Nope, because it is currently at its cap.
Oh, okay.
So, which I believe is six hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Which maybe put a note in there, like, uh, you know, a, a little thing at the bottom saying, "Not required because we're at our cap."
Or I could just take it off.
Or, uh, or take it off, either one.
Yeah.
And the, and the general fund is, uh, where are we at with that right now?
So this would, you know, Brittany and I have kind of gone back and forth on this. Brittany is confident that this eighty thousand dollars would keep us above our ten percent, which is in accordance with their financial policies.
Okay. If we can get that verified.
Yes.
Beforehand, because, okay.
Well, if you ask Brittany, she'll tell you she verified it, so. But I, I had a question about that.
Yeah, that's okay, questions are good.
Article Two is the property tax exemptions. Uh, just to remind everybody, we currently try to keep it around eight hundred dollars now. Um, we've increased it steadily each year.
Do we anticipate it being around there?
What we'll do is we'll find the percentage, because what you're voting on actually is the percentage.
Right, yeah, okay, so that'll get verified as well.
Board of assessors will make a recommendation on what that percentage is.
Will we know that sooner than later, or will we know that later?
Yeah, uh, I mean, yeah, Board of Assessors are meeting on the 28th.
Okay.
Six, that week, the last weekend after, whatever, I can't remember which day.
So our meeting on the 26th will have the final stuff? Okay.
Thanks, Jen.
Jen's like it, we got to get it now for the warrant, so. She'll keep the foot on the gas. Um, the next article is a, amend the demo delay bylaw. As you know, we had discussions about that at the previous town meeting. Um, it was decided to study that and look at that and revise that again. Um, this is actually going to be put forward by the Historical Commission. Do you want me to go through some of the, the larger changes or specific, specific changes?
Has Town Council had the opportunity to go over this and make sure everything is?
Yes, yes. And, and Town Council has actually made some suggestions which are incorporated into this.
I guess my only question is, you know, we had Helen Nicole here, um, a couple of meetings ago to talk through, you know, potential changes to the bylaw. Were there more changes that were outside of what we had talked about, not just sort of like, um, you know?
Like little scrims?
Yeah, because I know that there was stuff that said like, you know, twenty years old versus twenty-five, or the twenty-five business days, sorry. Um, and I know that that was, that was changed, but in general, were there any other significant changes from what we had talked about with Helen?
Now, I can't remember when we had Helen here last, um, if we had, if they had the language in here that clarified what bona fide and reasonable efforts meant.
No, we did not. That, that wasn't.
That was not on there.
Okay, so that is new. Um, and let me just go through that. So it's eight B. And I'll just read it. "The commission is satisfied that for at least twelve months, the owner has made continuing bona fide and reasonable efforts to locate a purchaser, to preserve, rehabilitate, or restore the subject building, and that such efforts have been unsuccessful." So that's the current language. The thought was, okay, how do you define what a reasonable effort is? So, um, "The language has been added for further clarity, continuing bona fide and reasonable efforts shall be to provide the Historic Commission with a list of efforts the applicant intends to make to fulfill this requirement within thirty days of being issued a termination, a determination of twelve-month demolition delay due to preferentially preserved status. This list should include preferably five separate planned attempts and must satisfy no less than three separate planned attempts to show the applicant is looking for someone to purchase, preserve, rehabilitate, or restore such a building. The applicant will also be required to provide two written updates, one at four months and one at eight months to the Historic Commission, showing the status of the reasonable efforts being fulfilled prior to the end of the twelve-month demo delay period."
Okay. My only question is, what happens if they're not satisfied?
Then they wait until the twelve months expire.
And then after the twelve months expire, are they? Because I, because, you know, my, my only question is that the commission is satisfied that for at least twelve months, the owner has made continuing efforts, like, so what happens if they?
So I think it's covered under enforcement and remedies. No building permit shall be issued with respect to any premises upon which a significant building has been voluntarily demolished in violation of this bylaw for a period of three years.
Well, what is a reasonable effort, though? You know, the town puts out, uh, we put out RFPs, uh, all the time, and we, we sometimes don't get any responses, so.
Well, that would, I would consider it a reasonable effort.
You know, what, what happens here if there's no response to a legitimate effort to, to find somebody that's willing to?
Well, that would be the effort, right? If they're willing, if they're putting stuff out there.
That's considered an effort?
Yeah, so this, this quantifies, I guess, efforts, if you want to, want to list them out. And, um, so the applicant, uh, whoever that is, is responsible for putting that out there.
So, I mean, again, wh- what is an effort? An effort is putting, let's say, this property up for sale with the condition that it be rehabilitated or, um, preserved, rehabilitated or restored. So is that the effort?
Yes. So separate plans attempts to show the applicant is looking for someone to purchase, preserve, rehabilitate, or restore such a building. So advertising it, um, you know, evidence of discussions with interested parties, and then if, if they, you know, obviously if they don't meet that, um, that's a good question. You know, what happens, what happens in that point? Um, because I think there probably, now that I think about it, there could be, maybe we should need to include language in there that says, okay, well, what if the applicant doesn't do that? I mean, you could surmise that the, um, that the demo delay period would be extended. But I'm not sure if that's in here anywhere. That's a good question.
There's nothing about the demo delay being extended, but it says that there will be no building permit given for three years.
No, that's it there.
If they.
But I think that is, they violate.
They violate something here.
Yeah, if they violate.
But I think in this case here, if, if somebody's making a, a good faith effort, and there's no legitimate reasonable responses, and then the twelve months expire, then it seems to me that the, the demo delay is gone.
It expires.
Right?
Right.
So, uh, I, it, it, to me, this just sounds squirrely, uh, in, in, in some ways, I, you know. Now, I also think that there's potential for, you know, a property owner to be in a position where he's not able to, let's say, um, get the full value of his property in a sense, because if he's being forced to, um, be put in a position to, to sell something for rehabilitation resource, he may have to sell it at a greatly reduced price, just like we did with the whole house. So, I, you know, I think it's important to have a demolition delay. I'm just not clear on, on, on this language, I guess. You know, I'd like to really hear from Lisa on something like this.
Okay, will Lisa approve this?
Well, I'd like to understand from her, you know, why this is necessar- there's good language, I guess. You know, it's interesting, we really haven't had that many, uh, demolition delay requests or issues. There's only been a handful over the last maybe ten years. Uh, one was the, Cherry Street, the Fidenzie House, which is what it is now. There was a demo delay on that, it expired and it was demolished. There was one on, uh, actually on Fifty-Six Fountain Street, which is that, I think, that new house that's being built in the back. And I seem to recall something about, about some snafus with that application. Uh, the mill buildings now have a current, they have a nine-month delay on them right now. Uh, and that'll, I'm sure, expire, you know, relatively soon at the rate that, you know, that process is going. And then, two Twenty-Six Auto Street, or, which is the Simpson, Simpson property, not quite sure what building there, there was a delay on, because I think the barn.
Which fell down anyway.
Which fell down, right? So, um.
Yeah, Helen Nicole just jumped on.
Oh, okay. Let's ask her. So Helen, um, I, we, we see you there, we're, we're discussing the, the demo delay bylaw, and we had some questions that came up. As far as the language that was added, um, and this is, what section are we on?
Eight, it was eight B, I believe.
Eight B, um, where we say that the commission is satisfied that for at least twelve months, the owner has made, um, continuing bona fide and reasonable efforts, and it says, for further clarity, it kind of lists, um, what those bona fide and reasonable efforts should look like. Um, so I think the, the question is, um, a couple of questions. I think, I think one, my question is, so what, um, what happens at the end of the twelve months if, if the reasonable efforts have not been made? Like, is that, does that trigger another demo delay, or is there, um, or is it just expire and the builder can just build?
Okay, well, right now, um, because actually, um, this came up in our meeting, well, we've discussed this a couple of times, and it came up at the Historic Commission meeting last night as well. And, um, right now, the way it stands, if this were to pass, the really only thing we could do is just to apply pressure during, during that twelve-month period to, to have them conform to trying to mitigate, um, having to de- demolish a building.
Okay.
Maybe to help them find other opportunities. We're discussing bringing another warrant further in the future, maybe, you know, next year, to add in a few more things, um, that we, we didn't put into this version, and that was one of them, and we had discussed last night, something like a, a possible financial, but we have to check into, you know, what really can and can't be done, but.
Okay.
Some kind of financial, um, by, you know, fee for violating, or perhaps extending it six months, or whatever other ideas people come up with, but that wouldn't, excuse me, that would not be included in this version. So, right now, the way it stands, like I said, I think the only thing we can really do is just sort of call them out, apply pressure. It's a little bit more structured than we had previously had, it doesn't really add in, you know, a consequence, which I think probably we did miss the vote on, we did discuss it, and I think that, that, it would have been nice to have had that, which is why we'd like to probably do that now again in the future.
Okay. Thank you, that, that's helpful. Does anyone else have any questions on this for, for Helen?
On, on the entire document?
Well, on, on, I mean, the, do you have any other questions on the, on that section?
On that section there? No, no, I think Helen answered it.
Okay. Great. Do you want to keep going, Michael?
Yeah, I'll keep going. Um, I think the other things that the board has already covered, I think, when Helen last appeared before the board on some of these changes.
Well, no, I still have, I have a question regarding the, the demolition delay. Uh, and maybe Helen, you can, the, at the, in the definition section, uh, talks about the definition of a, uh, historically or architecturally significant building shall mean any building in whole and apart which is seventy or more years old, uh, A, which is listed on or is a contributing bu- building within an area listed on the National Register of Historic Places, or which is the subject of a pending application, uh, for such listing, or is eligible for such lis- listing. So, my question is, we have a, uh, a, a, a listing of Ashland historic houses, and I believe we want to update that as well. Why isn't there language that, that identifies that list of Ashland houses as being least historically significant from the, from the commission's point of view?
You're talking about the macros? Okay, I, I'm not sure what you mean by least historically significant. Uh, what, I'm, I'm sorry, but what, what did you mean by that?
Like.
I think those are addressed in the, in, in following points.
Yeah, I, I think, Helen, what is being referred to is the.
I just joined in, so it's, I, I might be a little behind on the conversation, I'm sorry.
No, I think what Steve's referring to is the Historical Property Survey that was done in 2010.
Okay.
Um, and if there's reference to that here. I know under definitions, you have, um, you know, definition one is a building would be importantly associated with one or more historic persons or events, or with the broad architectural, cultural, political, economic, or social history of the town or the Commonwealth, or.
That's the existing, that's the existing language, like, that's not something we're changing. That was what's already there. That, that's the, what we have now.
Yeah, but I, I realize that, Helen, but I'm asking, why isn't the acknowledgement of the, uh, Ashland Historic Survey on, you know, as part of that definition? And if we do put a new survey together, why wouldn't it be acknowledged as, as part of that definition?
Um, well, I think that's something definitely to consider. That wasn't something that we had, um, we had actually thought of at the time we were working on this, and it, and it makes sense to definitely think about it and consider it and maybe add that in. I think at this point, um.
Can we add that wording, right? So where it says, within an area listed on the National Registry of Historic Places, or is on the list of Ashland Town Historic Buildings? Or which is subject of a, I mean, just, can't we stick that in there? This isn't a, and then we can approve this? Is that possible?
Is that something you have to do? I mean, today's what, the, the, so it hasn't been closed out yet. So I think you can't, we could add it in, um, because it, it's not closed. The only thing is getting the Historic Commission to vote on it before.
Yeah, I, I'm not asking, you know, certainly anybody to jump through hoops, it's just a question I had, and, you know, I, I think these things can get tweaked in the future. It just, you know, we're going to be doing a new survey at some point, uh, in the future, and I think maybe that would be the time to address it, so I'm not suggesting, you know.
We are putting together a list of things we would like to further, um, add i- in the future, and maybe, you know, in the next, near future. So I can add that to the list, or, and I'm not sure about this, if you really wanted to add it in, um, you probably know better than I do, there is a way to do it on the town meeting floor, right? Michael, there.
Yeah, we can do it on town meeting floor, but I'm not suggesting that, and I don't, I, I would just, I'm asking a question, pure and simple, and.
Okay.
I'm suggesting that maybe you wait until the new survey is completed, and then you can revise the, the bylaw again, that's all.
Sure, no, that's, that's a good thing to, to, to add, to add to our list.
But wouldn't that fall under category, wouldn't those buildings already fall under category one?
Yeah.
Isn't that automatic?
I wish I had that right in front, I don't have it, for some reason it's not.
Under which category, Michael?
Category one, so under definitions.
Category one.
Is importantly associated with one or more historic persons or events, or with the broad architectural, cultural, political, economic, or social history of the town or Commonwealth.
Ah, I just found it.
Yeah, wouldn't that just?
Or B two, I think it would be, all of those would be listed under that.
I'm sure it does, but it just seems like it would make sense to me that you would, you know, if you're talking about the National Register, about the Town Register, that's all. Just a question.
Okay, well, I, you know, I definitely will put that down as something for us to discuss.
I, I would say, Helen, though, we're, we're looking, we're going to close the, the warrant next meeting, so, you know, I, I don't.
This would be for a future.
Yeah, yeah, I would say that, so, okay.
That's a good idea. Um, any more questions on the demo delay?
No.
Or is everybody satisfied with that?
We're good.
Okay, awesome. Thanks for jumping on, Helen, I appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem. Glad I could answer your questions.
The next article is, uh, related to Cadillac Paint. It's accepting the gift parcel, uh, technically at zero Nancy Drive slash Elliott Street. This is the parcel that Bob Skiabi has offered the town. Um, it abuts both Cadillac, it's squeezed between Cadillac Paint and Nancy Drive, um, so certainly want to thank him for his, his generosity on that, and.
Will there be a map or something to show people where it is at town meeting?
Yeah, it'll be filed with the clerk's office.
Okay, perfect.
This, um, also says Board of Selectmen, like, could we update that to Select Board, or is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's only been like three years.
That's okay, that's all right, it's still new.
Okay. Um, next article is adopting the provision from the Brave Act, um, so this, we had already passed the, the Brave Act, which was a property tax exemption for any real estate, um, but it excluded real estate that was owned in a trust, so this would actually remove that exclusion, so it's a very simple change. And then last is funding improvements to the middle school, uh, ballfields, um, and it's pretty self-explanatory, includes scoreboards, dugouts, benches, and batting cages. So they, they would be using a hundred and eighty-five thousand from the open space account, and I believe CPC's already passed this, right?
This came from school committee?
This actually was initiated between, um, the schools and our DPW.
Oh, okay. Nice, okay, good.
All right, any, any questions?
But we're gonna wait to vote this until our last meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
And then we'll have a, we'll rob open here, and we'll have a full board.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll vote to, to close the warrant, then. Sounds good. All right, um, moving on our agenda, um, discussion of panhandling on town roads, um, I know we had gotten an email from, from a resident, um, regarding this, and I know Joe had asked to, to put it on the agenda as well. Joe, did you wanna, did you wanna say something?
Just real briefly, Madam Chair, um, like anything else, when one town decides to take action on something that, uh, is not conducive to everyday living, and, and people get upset about it, they, they draft a law, or they pose sanctions, and all that does is just, it doesn't solve the problem, it just moves the problem to another area. And it has, uh, come to, come to, uh, my, my attention that, uh, and I've witnessed it twice, uh, since Framingham has passed their, uh, their language of, of panhandling on one thirty-five, uh, near, uh, the Shell Station, I've seen it twice, uh, and more recently it has, uh, shown itself upon, uh, Ashland Square. Now, the folks aren't going up, up and down the streets and knocking on the doors like they have, and windows like they have in Framingham, you know, at lights, but they're out there and they're, you know, they're approaching, uh, customers, or potential customers from these, to these stores, and it's, uh, I noticed one individual was very leery about it, and actually didn't go into the store, went back to their counter cough. So, it's, seems to be, you know, affecting some, you know, some, some merchants in town, I don't believe they have called, I don't know if they've, you know, made reports to, to the APD or not, but, uh, I did see it, I did see it personally, so, uh, I just wanted to bring it to the, to the, to the board's attention, and, and maybe, you know, try to quantify doing some, making some type of action or doing something, uh, with respect to the, so, before, before, you know, oh, they're not bothering us, and it just seems to get worse, and, you know, over, over a period of time. So, I just wanted to bring it up to the board.
Okay. Thanks, um, you know, just to, just to sort of, for folks that may not be aware of what Framingham did, and this, I'm, Michael, you're probably more familiar with Framingham's.
Why you say that?
I am all Ashland all the time.
So first of all, panhandling is a constitutionally, um, protected right, so, you know, so there's, there's the legal component of it. Framingham, so Framingham did outlaw panhandling, Framingham, um, outlawed aggressive.
Aggressive, on certain streets.
Which is, which is on certain streets, um, mostly for public safety issues because people were in the streets.
In the streets, right.
Um, and so, you know, I, I think, you know, from, from my perspective, I don't know how, like, I don't know how many, I know you said you've seen it twice, I haven't seen it at all, so I don't know whether or not there's, um, have we had a lot of reported
I have seen it, I've seen it twice as well, over by, uh, the Walgreens, uh, area, and.
Same person, right, Steve?
Same person both times, uh, and, you know, clearly, just from observation, um, you know, there's these stories, they could be myths, I have no idea, stories of professional panhandlers that earn all kinds of substantial incomes from panhandling, I don't know if that's true or not, clearly this gentleman didn't qualify under that, it was, you know, whether he's homeless, whether he's got mental issues, uh, he seemed to me to need more help than, you know, a few dollars could, you know, could, could satisfy, but, you know, it's, um, you know, I think, you know, to go to Joe's point, uh, you know, I, I think we have, uh, you know, conflicted feelings about this, I mean, at least I did, you know, watching this particular gentleman, because you, you have compassion for a human being, versus, you know, this is not family entertainment, right? And, you know, it's not conducive to our quality of life, in a sense, so, you know, I don't know if it's, uh, you know, I hope we don't see spillover from Framingham, I think we should monitor it at this point, and, uh, you know, I suspect winter's coming, you're not gonna see a whole lot of that activity at this point, and, uh, you know, we monitor it, and if it becomes a bigger issue, you know, clearly we, we would have to, have to consider it, but, uh, you know, I, I, I guess I'm conflicted.
I mean, you know, from my perspective, it's, it's really kind of a symbolic thing of what's happening, you know, with, with mental illness, and homelessness, and, and drug addiction, and, you know, that touches all communities, including Ashland, and so my question is to Michael, like, what, from a human services perspective, from a police perspective, what can we do for supports for people that are, that are out there that, you know, if, if, are we able to offer support to, to people that are, um, that are out there?
Yes, so, I mean, Jennifer and Courtney and their team, they do outreach, um, on a continual basis, uh, with people to try to get them the services that they need. Now, we can't necessarily provide them everything ourselves, but, um, Jennifer certainly has contacts with other agencies and other resources, um, that can be used to, to help these people, but they have to want to have the help, and that is the key.
Yeah.
Some people don't want to, you know, either they don't have the capacity to make good decisions, like they need some help, or they just, they don't want to, for whatever their reason is. So, that's a, it, it's a tough issue, and, you know, I think if we're gonna talk about enforcement, um, or if we're gonna talk about an ordinance or something like that, you also have to correspond that with, well, who's gonna enforce it, and how can it be enforced? So that's, I just wanted to add that as, as part of the discussion.
The interesting thing with the Framingham, uh, proclamation is, you know, they, they talk about it being content neutral, so, you know, I can stand on a public street on a soapbox and rail against, you know, whatever, uh, or I can stand on the street and, and panhandle, and it's essentially the same right as you suggested. So, I think it's, uh, you know, I think the, the, the thing with, um, with Framingham is the going out into the street is, becomes now a public safety issue. I'm not sure how you address somebody that's on the sidewalk with a sign.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know how you find somebody who's panhandling for money, fifty dollars is the punishment.
Oh, I thought that was ridiculous.
So.
So I, I like Steve's idea, let's be aware, I have not seen it, but I don't think I'm in downtown or in some of these places as often as you guys. I would also say if we can, if it's noticed, if our police are driving by and they notice it, could we have them contact Jennifer and see, have them reach out to that person, go to that person, or, or somehow make that connection, and see if, if there is a way or something we can do to help them, and then if it becomes a bigger issue, then we can address it, but at this point, I don't think we need to.
I believe that actually happened with the person on Walgreens, so, the police did go and interview that person, um, and Casey Osterreicher, who's just awesome in our police department, she has a very good working relationship with Jennifer and our human services team, so, um, I'm sure they, they communicated about that.
Okay, great.
Yeah, thank you. Just wanted to bring it to the attention, not looking for punitive damages or anything of that nature, just.
No, I mean, it's, Framingham, I mean, it's, it's rude, you know, you go to Route Thirty if you're going to, you know, Lowe's or Home Depot, I mean, it's.
Yep. Okay. Thank you, guys. Um, moving on in our agenda, we're, um, we've passed our consent agenda, we're on to priority project update, um, downtown?
Yeah, and I'll try to keep this brief in the interest of time, I know we're coming up already on the ten o'clock hour, so.
We can't blame Rob for, for this.
You cannot blame Rob. So first with downtown, I think everybody sees the, the progress that's being made with the sidewalks, if you're on Front Street, you see the brick branding now, they've been installing trees. One thing I do want to bring to your attention is, um, that we are looking at doing the work that, of jacking under the tracks before Thanksgiving.
Wow.
So, it was gonna be probably next spring, but, um, our contractor, Giocio, the, the firm that they work with that does the jacking, said that they're, he's closing up shop, and this is the last job that they're gonna do, so.
Oh, wow.
But they have to do it before Thanksgiving, so, um, I've gone ahead and issued the change order for that, and worked with Keolis and the MBTA for, um, getting the flaggers, et cetera, and stuff like that, so we'll, we'll have to do a traffic management plan, we'll have to look at that, see what that means, um, we're gonna have to do some test pits first to see how far off the road we can do before we can really come up with that, and Giocio's been finding the right time, been trying to find the right time.
Any, any impacts on businesses, namely, you know, we've had requests from businesses in terms of their holiday season business?
The intent is to impact them as little as possible.
Well, if it's done before Thanksgiving, I mean, I know their holidays start sooner, but before Thanksgiving, then it's actually better, okay.
So that's downtown, um.
Michael, can you just review, 'cause I know people, we've, I've had this question asked, and I saw someone parking, with the new extended sidewalks, is there still gonna be parking in front of Town Hall and Nix?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so those are still.
I thought so, but I just, you know, I wanted to make sure.
Those are still, those are still on the plans, um, if people wanna go look at the plans online, it shows that it's on there, the ones down by the bagel table in the Historical Society.
In front of Ashland House as well.
Yep.
So.
Great.
Yeah, we're, we're not losing.
Can I go back to the, the prior discussion? Will that work be done on the weekend, or be done on weekdays? I know there was discussion on weekends only, to minimize, you know, minimize the track.
Since we're doing the, the jacking, as opposed to the open cut, uh, we can do it during the week.
Weekend, okay.
So, yeah, when we were talking about doing the open cut.
Yeah.
Um, we were talking about basically shutting down the train for, for the weekend, and we would, we would have to bear the expense of busing people from, like, Sepulvede, you know, Ashland Station to Framingham.
Framingham, yeah.
Ultimately, the MBTA decided they wouldn't allow that.
Right.
So.
Okay.
Okay, um, public safety building, um, you know, everybody can see that's coming along, I don't know if Jen, you wanna give them an update?
So, I think the last time we met, we were waiting for the apparatus bay doors, those have arrived, um, they're slightly missing, uh, the track piece, which will allow them to be motorized, but they're going to install them, which will fully secure the building, and that should happen over the next two weeks. We have some, uh, work to do, just to make sure that all the doors are properly, um, tied into the fire alarm, and then they can request, um, final inspections from all of our inspect, inspectors, and hopefully give us at least a partial occupancy until they work through the door, um, issue, so, um, what we'd love to have is, uh, move over dispatch and police, obviously that, the apparatus bay doors do not impact their operations, continue to work with our architect, um, and the project team on a solution for those doors, um, once they're installed, um, and the, the building is fully secure.
So once the, the, once the building is fully secure, you'll be able to move over dispatch and police, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Um, so likely, uh, end of this month, or, you know, early November is what we're sort of looking at, we obviously have to work with the state, um, they will provide us a cut over date for nine-one-one, um, and then once that happens, all the calls come into the new dispatch center. So working on all of the punch list items as well, so that's what they're currently doing while they're working through some of these larger issues. That's really where we are.
Good. Won't really update too much on, on the Minda School, I think one of the things that, that is significant just from a paperwork standpoint is, um, Compass has now become, fully become Vertex, so, I may have to do, had to do some work related to that. Yolanda, I don't know if you wanted to add anything?
We haven't, uh, they've met, I think I missed a meeting, um, I know they're, it's moving forward, and as with anything else, there are some delays, and, um, but they're, they're really working to stay on track for the timing for August of next year, so, hopefully have more at our next meeting.
All right. Valentine Project, so I met with Doug today, um, I, I've already signed the first pay requisition for the contractor to get their bonds and insurance, so that's moving forward. What the contractor has done is submitted to Doug, like, some of the, um, the specs for the materials that are gonna be used, so like the, you know, rough son pine, um, also, um, the shingles, that, that's another important thing, do you, do you wanna weigh in on the color of the shingles?
I think similar to what's there now.
I don't.
Okay, all right, just wanted to offer that.
I would say similar to what's there now.
Okay. Yeah, didn't think you would, but I, but I wanted to.
I would like to be notified as they're doing stuff, 'cause I think it'd be great to get footage of it, you know, as they're taking some of the demo, you know, as they're doing some of the demolition, as they're doing some of the.
It's a good idea, there's some drone.
Some drones, some, as they're putting in the concrete, we can do a story about it, I think that'd be, I'd, I'd like to know when stuff is happening.
Absolutely. Doug is supposed to be meeting with Steve, uh, the contractor tomorrow, um, talking about some things, setting up a schedule, like getting the fence and stuff like that.
Okay.
So that's, um, yeah, that's moving along, and, you know, a lot of the land work has, I mean, Carl and Robin have, and other volunteers have done a great job, it's, it's, it just looks incredible. Warren District, um, I think with the Warren Barn, just to give you an update on that, we've, we've requested the money, the seven hundred and fifty thousand that, uh, Senate President Spilka was, uh, able to get for us through the state ARPA, uh, funding mechanism, um, so we'll just, we'll have to wait for that to come through, and then we'll have to figure out how to make up the difference.
Is there, is there a timetable as to when that money's, will be, you know, forwarded to the town, or?
Um, I'm gonna go out on a limb, Joe, and say that it's probably gonna be done before the end of the year. Calendar, yeah.
Okay.
Well, if you consider that soon.
That is soon.
Okay.
I was thinking maybe like next year, that's good.
Okay, um, so that's about it for that, um, do you want to just?
Yeah, just before we, we move on to that, um, could I get a motion to go beyond ten o'clock? So moved. All those in favor?
Aye.
Hi. Thank you, good. Onto town manager reports.
So, the first thing we have on the agenda is discussing the, the RFI, the Request for Interest, for the current police and fire stations on Main Street. I, I'm gonna turn it over to Jen to, to talk about the details, but I just want to explain to you where we're coming from, and to the public where we're coming from. Oftentimes, when we have discussion about what to do with these town-owned properties, or really in any property that's looking at, at being utilized, or reutilized, we have this conversation where, um, residents and the public tell us things that they would like to see, but unfortunately, there's not necessarily the capacity of the town or a private entity to actually do what, what is being asked, um, primarily because it, it doesn't make sense for them financially to do it. And so what happens is that you have the situation where the public gets frustrated, and feel like we don't necessarily listen to what they're saying, because what happens doesn't align with what, um, what they wanna do. and feel like we don't necessarily listen to what they're saying, because what happens doesn't align with what, what they wanna do, and then we all get frustrated because we're doing the best we can, and we can't meet the public's needs, and, and we just know much more in-depth what the limitations are. So the RFI process is hopefully designed to eliminate some of that, where we're looking at get, getting requests for interest, so high-level type information that we can utilize to then, you know, present that to the public, at least we'll have something somewhat solid, not a full proposal, and then we could distill that information into the, into a request for proposal, but I'll turn it over to Jen.
Sure. So I think Beth Reynolds, our Economic Development Director, had really done a nice job of laying out this RFI, so initially, sort of looking at similar processes that we have done when we've had properties, you just go straight to an RFP and you sort of get the proposal, so that, you know, the Affordable Housing Trust has, has done that, we've done that with four thirty-three, we tried it with Valentine, um, and there's certainly been other areas in which we just went straight to an RFP, so the full proposal. Um, and that really requires us to really provide some level of direction, you know, where, what, what the town might want, and so what the RFI is going to allow us to do is sort of, it's a very high level to get information from potentially interested parties that would wanna invest in, in the two buildings or that parcel, which includes both buildings. And then we can then take that information to the public and then really inform a better RFP process, um, that we feel like we might be, get the best proposal, so. Really what, this, the, the purpose of this is to sort of determine the feasibility of the, like, reusing those, that property, or those buildings on that property, how potential investors might want to propose reusing, and then also sort of, you know, what types of projects might, might people be interested in that redevelopment? Um, and then we'll take that, as I said before, sort of take that to the public, inform our RFP process, and then go out, so anything that is submitted here isn't binding, it's pretty high level, they'd fill out a form, they'd sort of talk about the type of, um, proposal that they would submit, the type of project, um, what they may be willing to purchase, um, or lease, how much they'd be willing to invest, what they might be looking for, for the, from the town, so sometimes we can offer some incentives for a property that needs a lot of investment before somebody comes, so we're just getting idea on what type of things might, might potential investors or developers want or, or ask for from the town, cause then we can also have a conversation about whether that's palatable. Um, and so they'll be really, we're just, the only thing that we're excluding in this process is that they'll, we will not accept any proposals or even RFI responses that include housing, so that's really the only exclusion, sort of keeping it open-ended, and then we can have a conversation later. And then I think, um, the way we can sort of form that into an RFP is we can sort of talk about what would we want to exclude, and that way we're still keeping it pretty open, because, um, and doing a little research on what other communities receive, you know, obviously you're gonna get a little bit more responses to an RFI than you might actually get for a proposal, so when they really start to, we do ask about what other types of projects have you done of this magnitude, how do you plan to finance, so that you get hopefully serious investors, and not people sort of just throwing spaghetti against the wall. Um, but certainly people might find other locations, or they sort of fall, fall out of the process.
And it's designed to accommodate either somebody interested in the entire property, or?
We're leaving it pretty open-ended here, I mean, we do sort of talk about, um, the town, there's the only other place that we said the town would obviously be interested in some additional parking, just because, for any use of that, reuse of that building, likely there isn't enough parking, and so that is sort of built into, for people's thought process. But other than that, it's pretty open-ended, in terms of what people might propose for, we asked that question, would you reuse both buildings, would you have a different proposal?
Well, I, I remember the, the initial conversations that we had several years ago, when we were talking about building a new public safety building, that the police station would be raised for additional downtown parking, and a lot of people were, you know, happy to hear that, because there was a, you know, a lack of parking at the time, and I'm sure there's still a lack of parking. I think people need to realize that there's parking available, um, and I'll use case in point, that Farmer's Market right now, and we had this discussion earlier today, that, you know, because of the construction, some of the parking spaces have been taken up for material, uh, storage, and it's unfortunate, but people get very accustomed to parking in very close proximity to where they wanna go. They've never been to Boston, and they'd have had to walk, or go someplace, you know, you, they wanna be right near it. So a lot of, the, the average individual would like to get as close as they can to the event that they wanna go to, uh, without having to exert the extra energy to, to walk from A to B, so. That may, that may take up, you know, some issues with respect to, you know, the downtown parking area, who knows? But so be it.
I would just think that, you know, conversations we had three or four years ago might, you know, we, I don't think we can be held to what might have been said, right, that we're gonna raise, that we're definitely gonna raise the police building to add parking, I don't know that we can be held to that if a proposal comes through that makes sense.
Well, I, I understand, but once, once they start seeing what the building looks like inside, and some of the work that needs to be repaired and need to be done, I think that, you know, I think the best bet would be at the fire station to, to do what, you know, needs to be done, and.
Yeah, we are encouraging a walkthrough, so the dates on here will likely have to change, obviously, we were hoping to try to, there isn't the same requirements as the RFP, so we're obviously trying to give people a reasonable amount of time to put some thought and effort into this, um, and we were hoping to sort of get it in before Thanksgiving, and then have those months in between all of the holidays, um, to sort of review what we've received, have those conversations, but we didn't feel like, even if we were ready to go out for a full proposal, we wouldn't do it till the first of the year, um, because I don't feel like.
For the RFP, you mean?
Yeah, cause people don't pay atten, so we were trying to fit it in the before the holiday rush, um, and so we might have to move, but we had planned a general, you know, offer a time for a site tour at the end of this month, which would likely have to be moved out a bit, just, um, so people can see the condition of the current buildings if they so chose.
I think you guys did a great job on this, I think, I think, I think it's, I think it's a very good, smart move, yeah.
This is all Jen and Beth.
So, I just recommend that you put, actually put the page numbers on them? Cause there's a reference to answer paid, questions on pages, this to that, and then there's no page numbers. But otherwise, very good proj, very good.
My only question is, um, so I know, I know the question is asked about, like, financing, like, how are you going to finance? But we don't ask them for like a overall ballpark of what they would be looking to spend on the project? We do?
I do, I think we do. Range of possible, so number four, range of possible price we're willing to pay?
Okay. That's, that's a price for the property, or?
Yeah.
But that's, doesn't include, you know, I'm, I'm like, I'm trying to think of like, you know, if, if somebody's, if somebody has a great idea, but is only able to spend a million dollars to renovate the fire station and purchase the property, we should know, you know, maybe if we can capture that?
So I think under five, um, that question is, please explain how, how you plan to finance this project?
Yeah, and then also I think three, so would you be able, would you be willing to finance the cost for a reduced sale price, right, so that's sort of like, maybe we reward that a bit, in terms of say, we, I, I understand, it's like a little, I think.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get, like, sort of like, big picture, like, are people really, um, is there limitations on, like, what people will be able to spend totally? Like, you know, if, if, I, you know, if we ask them how they're gonna finance it, you know, they may or may not, they'll be like, oh, I'm gonna finance fifty percent of it and pay cash for fifty percent, but it's more, that, that's more conceptual versus.
Yeah. The other thing is, they may not be willing to put every, I mean, this is just request for information, but it does become public record, so they may not be willing to put everything out there as to what they can afford, or what they're willing to pay.
That's a good point.
Right, because they wanna put, they wanna put feelers in the, in the water as well, to determine what kind of response they're gonna get, and then they might decide, okay, I will put forward, I will respond to the RFP, and now I would have to give more information.
Yeah, I mean, you can get more information during, you would certainly wanna have more specific information on financing through the RFP.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
How about, I don't see anything in here that refers to any potential, let's say, environmental issues on the property. Is that something that will get discussed at, at a walkthrough, or, I mean, I, I think that would be pretty important for an investor to, to know.
Well, if they're gonna go through a grant, they're gonna be doing that test.
Well, they, they are, but, you know, if they're, if, if we know of specifics, you know, I think it's, probably should be something that we're, we're forthcoming on, right?
Yeah, we did do testing there, canister testing, both at the fire station and the police station, I believe they both came in at acceptable levels. For, for their use.
For the, for their use.
Their use.
As a police station and a fire station.
Exactly, so you're looking at the fire station as being occupied, let's just say twenty-four seven, and the police station will not, not be that. So there's different standards and different, um, but it's a, it's a good point.
Yeah, I mean, we might be able to, in the, um, in the description section, we may be able to just sort of list that there may be some limitations with any additions, or, you know, like, there may be some additional permitting or review that would be required, so somebody could take that into consideration when they're sort of thinking what this might cost, it's obviously, um, anything would likely have, you know, have to get through the permitting process, so, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, you know, somebody, a, a potential may, you know, may ask the town to mitigate.
Yeah, one of the things we can do, I think, is we could put in here that any respondents need, are responsible for their own due diligence on, on any of those issues like that, so, um, you can go to Mass DEP, and you can find if, if there's been any restrictions put on the property, or anything like that. So maybe we add, we add that, that they're responsible for that.
Sure, and I guess that, when you just said restrictions, it did sort of trigger my, the other, um, thing that we did list is that the fire station will have a historical preservation restriction for the facade, so we're explicit about that, so they know that, um, the outside of that building.
In just the facade?
Um, that, yeah, I mean, that's what we, yeah, I, I believe so. And one of the other restrictions is no housing, so that's the other part that, that's in here too.
Okay.
Yeah, good.
So an individual can come in and buy both houses and put it up?
Right.
Before still rebuilding.
Correct. Good job, well done.
So, um, so this is gonna be available when?
So we'll have to put, we do have to put a legal ad in, and so that takes a few days lead time, so, and we could have it available as early as, we'll make a few adjustments as early as next week, and then just sort of adjust the dates down.
Okay. And it looks like the dates on here, you wanted the RFI's to be received before Thanksgiving, so, yeah, it's probably good.
Adjust those?
Yeah, we can adjust those, I think.
Yeah, I think adjust those.
Yeah, good, thank you.
Great.
And, you know, obviously, we'll put it out to the community and, and hopefully we'll get.
I hope we get some good, some, some good ideas.
Could be very exciting, should be.
Anybody else have any other comments, questions? So you wanna move on to the proposal for multifamily building moratorium?
Sure. Um, so, you know, we have talked a lot, and the community has talked a lot about, um, the proliferation of, of apartments throughout town, um, so just to give you an idea, a sense of, of what kind of scale we're talking about, in the twenty-ten census, Ashland had six thousand five hundred and eighty-one housing units, in twenty-twenty census, it would, it rose to seven thousand four hundred and ninety-five. And since twenty-twenty, we've permitted the UGC development, um, I'm sure there are other units that have been permitted that aren't necessarily multifamily. But then also, the planning board has in front of them, uh, another, almost five hundred units that they're, um, they're permitting right now, or going through that process right now. Um, I looked and I checked at the housing growth between twenty-ten and twenty-twenty, and with the exception of Hopkinton, Ashland had the largest increase of any place in Metro West, you know, that includes Framingham, Sudbury, South, Southborough,
Really?
Holliston, um, yes. Now, Hopkinton, obviously with legacy farms, they, they, they won that race, for, for sure, but, you know, one of the things.
Has Framingham's growth been since twenty-twenty?
I don't know, I don't have that data.
Okay.
I think those were permitted before twenty-twenty. A couple of them, the large, the big, large one, for sure.
And Buckley on Broadway that, too.
Yeah, but the Buckley might have, might have been as well, but, you know, one of the things that I think is important is, is that we have to see what the impact is on, the real impact is on the town, and whether it's services, infrastructure, um, schools, you know, things of that nature. We haven't necessarily had the opportunity to have these units come online, and, and then, well, at least, at least these new units that are before the planning board, have them come online and see what that impact is. So what I'd, I'd like to propose is a, um, two-year building moratorium on multifamily housing, which is defined as three units or more on a single lot. Um, this would give us the opportunity to take a pause, look at what, what the impacts are, times, times up well with our comprehensive plan, and then at that two-year period, it would be for a period of a little, little over two years. And I'll explain that a little bit later, but, um, yeah, I mean, I think that, in a nutshell, that's what it is.
Sounds like you can extend it to, uh, up to a certain point.
Yeah, as, as long as you're making progress, in trying to figure out exactly what's happening, and, and planning for that, you can extend it, I think ten years is really kind of the limitation.
Lisa mentions about ten years.
Yeah.
Yolanda? Yeah, just a question, um, so the bylaw shall prohibit any development for which a building permit has not been issued, or a complete special permit application has not been submitted for approval as of November sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two, for any new multifamily. How will this impact, if at all, any of the projects that are currently before the planning board?
This does not impact any of the projects currently before the planning.
And before the planning board, we have five oh one pond, one hundred Chestnut, and ten to fifty Main.
Main Street, and Shaw's filed a completed application.
Oh, they have, oh, okay.
So they were able to do that, we have the sewer moratorium on, which, you know, would prohibit them from kind of moving forward with that.
Okay, cause the sewer moratorium was put on before they applied?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So how would that work, so when the sewer moratorium expires, they would be able to, to move forward with their project?
So if they, if they, if it's through permitting at that point, and we have not extended that sewer moratorium, yes, they would be able to do that.
Okay, okay, okay.
You know, it's, it's interesting, looking at some, uh, population projections for Ashland, and MAPC did in twenty-ten, they did a projections for, for all, really entire state, but in Ashland, their projection for twenty-twenty population was seventeen thousand three hundred. Our US Census was completed eighteen eight thirty-two, which was greater than what they're projecting for twenty-twenty-five, so we're kind of five years ahead
Ahead.
of our growth, and, um, there's another Mass Donahue Center has new projections as well, so we're kind of tracking pretty closely with, 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 with what they're projecting now, so.
And we have a build-out number, right, of like twenty-two or twenty-three thousand?
They're projecting in twenty forty, at twenty, almost, well, twenty-four thousand.
So build-out is tough to, to measure, I, I know MAPC talks about it, because what, how they measure that is they look at the, at the zoning, and they see what kind of density is allowed, and then they project the population based on that. As long as we're subjected to forty B developments, which basically throw away any density parameters with zoning, we don't really know what that build-out is. So I should also point out, this, this also applies to mixed-use developments that have a multifamily component to it, so I don't wanna leave that out. So.
Okay.
Paula Parker is here, and I think she'd like to talk to us about this.
Sure.
If we're willing to give her a few minutes.
If you, if, if you wish to come and join us, come on up to the podium.
She's been very patient.
You, you have, you've been, you've, you've suffered through quite a bit this evening, so, thank you.
I think this was a good opportunity, I haven't seen, I haven't been in this forum, and I can't, since before COVID. I know you're back to in-person meetings, and I thought it was a good, yeah, I thought it was a good opportunity to come and.
We don't have a lot of guests.
You know, I thought there would be a lot of people here.
We suffer for the town, now it's your turn.
I won't keep you long, I know it's late, and I want to thank you all for everything that you're doing. It's just crazy times, and the town is so busy, and there's just a lot going on. And I have to give a hat tip for this last piece on the, on the moratorium. I'm concerned about Pond Street, really concerned about Pond Street. I see the projects that are coming in, and I'm afraid that we're losing our vision of what this road was supposed to be. I understand the retail landscape has changed, I get all that, I get the Amazon mania, I get the online mania. I think that the creativity that we use to develop this road has to be applied to developing the road, whereby we think as if there is no box. I know that there would be some components that would be civic, which is a whole other story, but in terms of developing it out and taking advantage of the local retailers that we can approach. Because we have the density already, that was the point. There are 1,288 condo units on Pond Street and Elliott, and those are supposed to be services for the residents and restaurants. Again, I understand the landscape has changed, I'm just really, really concerned at the number of massive-scale apartment buildings that are coming onto the corridor. They don't fit the topography, the architecture is, in what they call, the architecture industry, stick buildings, cheap boxes. And that's not what we are. And I'm just really concerned, not just me, but thousands of other residents that are on the corridor that won't come to these meetings and won't speak on Zoom. So I appreciate the time, and I appreciate putting a pause on what we're doing, and taking a look at what we're doing, because it's going to have a significant impact, significant, especially when we had pitched this, this project as having regional impact, and having, giving people in the surrounding communities a reason to come to Ashland, to come to Pond Street, a rebrand. It was supposed to be a rebrand, there were supposed to be things to do on Pond Street. It was supposed to be an economic engine to keep discretionary dollars inside of Ashland, instead of residents going outside to other restaurants. It's been a long time, it's been 10 years in the making, it's been 20 years in the making. Ed Bates and Sarah Hines started this long before we moved here, so, but I think we might have lost sight. And when I say we, I'm not pointing to anybody in this room, I'm just saying collectively, relative to what we have going on in the corridor now, and I appreciate the pause, because we really need to look at it very closely in terms of the impact, and listen to the residents as well. So again, I thank you, I know the town is crazy busy, and I know you're all working really hard, I just, I just had to come back and say hello, let you know I haven't gone anywhere. And again, I appreciate what you're doing, and I appreciate the pause. Thank you.
Thanks, Paula.
Thank you, Paula.
Thank you, Paula.
And thanks for all your work you've done in the past as well.
You know, I actually haven't stopped.
She's been.
No, you've been, you've been very active, I know.
I don't want to say I'm working in the shadows, because it implies something nefarious, but there's always, there's always conversations, there's always work, so I, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Paula.
Thanks, Paula.
So I just, I just had a, you know, I, I support doing a, a building moratorium. I think it is good to kind of take a pause and just see what the impact is. I would say, you know, the comprehensive plan process will be two years by the time we have something to town meeting. I would hope that we would have some of the, you know, because we have listed here, like, you know, roadways and infrastructure, and schools, and staffing for public safety, and all of those things, we need to have like a plan for. Because I, I think, and a budget for it, because I think that that's going to be part of the, part of the process. If we do need to hire, say, five public safety personnel, like what that's going to look like and impact our budget. We have to, like, we can't wait until the comprehensive plan is done to start that process, is what I'm saying, is, is we need to kind of do that as part of this. Because I think, I, I'm, I'm fully in support of doing a, a moratorium. I think, you know, I, I hear what Paula was saying about, about Pond Street. I do think that putting a, a, a moratorium on mixed-use is going to, is going to severely limit the, the businesses that do want to come to Ashland at this point. You know, I don't know how financial, financially feasible it is for, for commercial on its own to, to pop up. So I, I think we have to just understand what the implications of that could be, because I know that there are residents that, that feel strongly that we should have more commercial, and more commercial just, just is, is, it's about money, and it's about, it's about the financial feasibility of it. So we just have to, we have to be acknowledged that, that that could be something that comes out of this.
And I think there is commercial being built, and to Paula's point, what we have to do is show developers that Route 126 is a viable place for just commercial. You drive down Route 9, and I drive it on a regular basis from Natick to Southborough, and there is new space going in by Whole Foods, who just did a major revamp and put in a building, and they have new space going in. There's new space in Shoppers World that went from a one, one, one restaurant building to a multi-building. So there is commercial going on, and I think certainly Beth is doing a great job letting people know that Ashland is a place to come to, and we just need to help reinforce that, that commercial is viable. And I think the second thing, as you said, tying into the timing of the comprehensive strategic plan, talking about what we want that area of Pond Street, of Ashland, to look like. We had those conversations when we were doing all those meetings and all those charrettes, and what it was going to be for people. And it was a place for economic development, it was not a place to say, let's build more housing. And unfortunately, what happens is more housing is being needed, people want to live in Ashland. And so developers are coming forward with projects that they know that they can be profitable with. That's not a bad thing, but I think putting this building moratorium on will help us do that reset. We can start looking at using the tool that we've put in place and start projecting out, okay, with these projects that are already before us, we need to use that tool in regards to what it's going to cost us as a town, and what impact. I know that.
But the, you know, the, the fact is that the overlay language speaks about and incentivizes affordable housing.
Right.
Affordable, it, it does incentivize residential construction.
Right.
Of 25% of which would be affordable, so that is part of the overlay.
Right, but not all of these projects have 25% affordable.
I believe it's, I believe it's 10% is.
Well, it's, the overlay is 10%, that's correct, right? So the 501 is, is doing 25%.
They're doing 25%.
Right, Shaw's is committed to 25%.
I think, I think more, actually.
Yeah, I think they're doing.
You know, so, you know, it's, it, it, it goes back to zoning, and zoning language. But, you know, that is part of the district, you can't deny that, it's not part of the incentive for, for that, that area.
Well, the, the sad thing is, and Michael and I have had this conversation several years ago, this was brought up. I was the scapegoat 22 years ago, when the Ashland Police Department requested a building moratorium, because that's when FAFD's condos were just, they were popping up left and right, it was like chickenpox, they were everywhere. And the town couldn't keep up with the growth, you know, lack of staffing, and we knew there was an issue. So we went to town meeting floor, we provided all this information, and I can tell you that I was chastised by a former selectman, said, you folks don't know what you're talking about. This is great for the town, because they were getting additional tax monies. Well, yeah, but at the same token, you know, there wasn't a fair balance. You know, yet it was, the balance, the, the skills were tipped to the builders, and, you know, the town had no way of catching up. This is a great way to catch up, a great way to say, okay, let's hold on, what are we looking at for the future? You're preaching to the choir when you ask for a building moratorium with me, so, you know, you have full support, with respect to this. And people have to, you know, realize that we're, we're doing this to, to keep the landscape a little bit more conducive to what people were accustomed to years ago. You know, so hopefully.
Yeah, if, I may just expand a little bit on, on one of the things that Brandy said. And this applies to Pond Street especially, but it, it applies everywhere. The town has to be comfortable with the fact that by not allowing multifamily units, that there's quite, there's quite the possibility that investment in Ashland is not going to happen. And some of these, you know, if you want to call them tired properties, or dilapidated properties, or whatever scale you want to talk about, they might possibly stay the way they are. And I think, you know, I think about Pond Street, and I think about the, it almost sounds like I'm arguing against myself here. But, you know, talking about the vision, but the Cecil Group was very, very clear that to make that Pond Street overlay used, utilized, you needed to take away the commercial, you needed to take away the open space requirement, and you needed to take away the affordable requirement, and leave it essentially residential. They were very, very clear, if you want to see investment in the corridor, these are the changes that you'll need to make. But.
So this is a, you know, we're, we're, we're like a hamster in a wheel, chasing, chasing growth, because that's, that's what allows the town to continue to sustain the organization. And until we figure out a way to get, to get away from that model, we're just, that's, that's what we're destined to do, is chase that over and over and over again. And, you know, the problem is that, you know, we, we have legacy costs, we have, you know, just the, the in, in, increase of, of contracts, of insurance, we just can't, you can't sustain it unless people are, unless residents are willing to pay more to maintain what, what we have. And, you know, so it's, it's, it's challenging, and I think it's going to get worse, you know, moving forward. I don't, you know, certainly, I think the difficulties of generating a budget are going to become more and more difficult, you know, shortly.
Well, very shortly, yeah.
But I also think that this is then information given to the community, right? This is a discussion with our community, which ties into the strategic plan. What do we want our community to look like in five, 10, 15, 20 years, right? What do we want to be offering our residents, what, and what is that going to cost us?
Right, well, that's the two-part question.
Right.
What do you want, and what are you willing to pay for?
Right, and, and, and I think we're, I mean, I sense it already, we're a conflicted community, right? We have people who don't want the change, and are not feeling like either they can afford or want to pay for more. And then there are other people who are willing to pay for more, who are willing to see more services. I mean, and that's been a conflict and issue we've had in this community for a while, that people who are comfortable with the way things are being done, and the people who are saying, no, I'm coming to this community and I want more. And it's a, and it's a discussion, and that's where the comprehensive, strategic, unified, whatever plan we call it, is hopefully going to get the input from both sides and both places where people are, to help us say, okay, you know, we, we think, we keep thinking, well, we want to add more this, we want to add more personnel, we want more that, but we have to get that from the people, right? And they have to then be willing to, to pay for that.
But there's also a lot to be said for, you know, when you rehabilitate a piece of property, you know, and I'll use like 21 Main Street as an example. So before that was rehabilitated, I think it was, it was on the, the tax card for $200,000.
Single-family home, yeah.
Right, I agree.
And now it's on the tax card for, I don't know, $3 million or $2 million, something like that, you know?
Yeah.
So somebody is paying taxes on $2 million versus $200,000. So, you know, it, it's, well, I don't have an answer for any of this, but, you know, that's, you know, that's part of what growth is, is to make properties better.
I agree, but there are, but it's finding, the community has to support that, right? I mean, I, how many, you know, you go into Boston, you go to New York City, and you see change, right? You see growth, you see new buildings, you see revised buildings, you see, but the people have to support that, right? So that, and that's where, that's where the conflict is.
Not necessarily, they don't have to support it.
Okay.
The, the property owners have, you know, they, they certainly have their rights to do, and it's no different in New York City, you know? Property owners have, you know, are, are, are doing these activities. It makes no difference what the, what the, really what the residents want, unless it's related to, you know, something historic or something that has some kind of preservation value to it.
It has to go within the zoning that's in that area, it has to.
You hit, you hit it on the head, it's all about zoning.
And that, and that's what I was going to bring up, the fact that, you know, we should start looking at zoning bylaws, and, you know, and start tweaking the zoning bylaws to update them for this, for this time period. You know, how long ago have we looked at, you know, the zoning bylaws and, and made any changes or corrections, or, or modified them to today's, you know, day and, you know, day and era? I, I don't know, I, I know John's listening in, if John can give me that, 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 that figure, that, that eight, that timeframe, that would be great. But it's been quite some time, and the same thing with the planning bylaws, you know, I, it just, I think they all need to be tweaked for, for the type of activity.
And, and again, I just want to caution everybody that, you know, it's, everybody talks about zoning as the great fix, right? So you zone it, and you visualize what you want, and you zone it accordingly. But that doesn't necessarily mean that the private sector is, it, it might zone them out, and.
Right.
I, I'm totally fine with that. We just have to understand that that revenue will end up having to get made up somewhere else.
Exactly. Are you going to the planning board tomorrow with this, is that your?
Yeah, I'll be going to the planning board and asking them to, to hold a special hearing, or they have to hold a public hearing for this.
So they have to have a public hearing for this, and then we'll add it to the town meeting warrant.
We'll add it to the warrant for next time.
Do we need to do anything tonight to support this, otherwise, I mean, it seems like we're all supportive.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, you know, you'll, you'll show your support when you put it on the warrant, and you can finalize that.
Getting tired.
Yeah, just one other quick question, just because it, it triggered for me, like, you know, you had said that Ashland was the second, had the second highest growth outside of Hopkinton. I'm just curious, you know, we were talking about zoning, you know, is that a zoning thing? Is it a, is it an opportunity thing where certain parcels were available? Because I think, like, I'm, I'm just curious what was driving that? Because I think, like, that is going to be a question that we also have to, like, address, because if it is a zoning, because our zoning is much more lax than, say, Framingham, or Sudbury, or, you know, Holliston, or any of those towns, like, maybe, maybe we do need to look at that, but if it's.
Look at someplace like Sherburne, right? They have a larger lot size requirement, which we, as a town, did away with, when all the condos were allowed.
Well, what I, what I think is happening, at least on Pond Street, is, is the, the Pond Street Improvement Project has made it more desirable for, for these, whatever the entity is, whether it's replacing the Fusion Building, whether it's a, an update of Shaw's, whether it's 501 Pond, now it's become more desirable. If we didn't want this, then, you know, I think for some people, they would probably suggest we shouldn't improve the corridor now. There was a lot of people, there's a lot of people, and I don't, you know.
They still do.
But also, just to go back, Steve, is, yes, some of the zoning was there, but when we talked about improving Route 126 and Pond Street,
And Pond Street, it was for economic development, right? It was not necessarily to say, okay, now we want. I mean, I personally never said I wanna improve Route one twenty-six so we can get more apartment buildings.
But you know, that was never, you know, I don't recall any conversations like that, but you know, the fact is that. Apartments are economic development. You wanna call them residential, be my guest. And I know we we tax classify them as residential.
Correct.
A lot of places tax qualify them as commercial.
Well, not in Massachusetts.
Not in Massachusetts, but there are and you know, there are states and areas that do that. So you know, they are. Um you you they 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 are an element of commercial development. Now, it's not the commercial development that you may want, but you know, the the overlay. You know, is allowed for all of this.
Right. We're not gonna solve the one twenty-six um issue tonight, but um so I think I think.
Or funding.
Or funding or anything. No, mm-mm. We're not gonna solve all the world's problems tonight, but so um unless unless anybody else has anything further. Um I have two questions for Michael and if you can't answer them tonight, that's fine. You mentioned a vandalism issue over at Stone Park.
Mm-hmm.
Um I I had not heard of that, so.
Yeah, it just happened within the last couple of nights. Um you know, I. I don't wanna assume that it's kids, but um.
If we could, once you find out more, if we could get updated on that?
Oh, I can, I mean, I can tell you about it. I mean, they just went berserk with the spray paint. Spray painted rocks, spray painted the the green shed. I think the Moms Club just painted. Um they sprayed trees. They even sprayed the ground like the mulch. Um it just went.
That's unfortunate.
Went crazy. So um so we're taking steps to making sure that that doesn't happen again.
And are we trying to identify who did it?
Checking uh videotape security from the stores that sell specific spray paint.
Um I do know that.
I mean, we don't have to go into details as to what they're doing, but as long as they're.
They're investigating.
Okay, great. Okay. Um the second question, and again, this doesn't have to be tonight. But um I was talking to a few people and I guess there's some promotions and changes happening in our police department. And I was wondering if at our next meeting, you can just update us and the public on what those are and what's going on? Or if we can have the chief in now that it's been a few months or?
Yeah, I don't think that's a bad idea. Um yeah, so we're, you know, we currently have a list um of promotional. A a lieutenant's list and then also a sergeant's list. And unfortunately, the sergeant list is is getting close to expire, so we're kinda. Kind of squeezed, compressed into into some making some changes.
That's some of the stuff I heard. So if we could just get an update, that'd be great. And the community as well. So if they're seeing new, you know, people in different roles, they know why. Thank you.
Okay. Everybody else good?
Good.
All right, let's move on to board reports. Uh Joe, you're up first.
Okay, great. Uh well, Kenji took a little bit of my thunder away about the fifteenth, so I won't repeat it, but.
Sixteenth.
There's a lot of things going on. Uh the other one is the Wacky Wonderful Parade. Which I know we'll all be proud of and I think it's a great thing. Uh kudos to Kate and and her committee. They've done a a great job. Very thorough. I think that will be the best way to describe that committee. I'm always in one. And looking forward to it. Hopefully we have a good day.
Who's who's driving with whom?
Yeah, who's riding with me?
I already took I already took his.
You've already called dibs on the on the Jeep? Well, how many, what car are you having?
No, I'm sorry, I'm with Steve.
Oh, you have a Steve? Oh, okay.
What's up with that?
It's convertible, okay. All right, so you.
I guess we're going with you, Michael.
Okay.
You're.
Where's Baskin? And Rob.
It's it's a lot cooler.
It is, it is.
All right. We're not decorating.
They'll be throwing pieces of granite at you.
We're not decorating or or dressing up or doing anything like bizarre, right?
No.
No, Jean Knifton is, I think, going to encourage me to decorate the car.
Okay.
And you all know we need to be there at one o'clock.
Yes.
And.
One number twenty-eight.
Yep.
Okay.
So.
And and I I.
Yeah. Yes, please come out.
I wanna reiterate just uh how much work that Kate and her committee have have done. Um you know, DPW and and Police and Fire have have done a lot of work behind the scenes, but you know, I will tell you. Um a lot of times, there's these great ideas that, you know, volunteers talk about taking on. And you know, just through, you know, the way things are.
Does not come to fruition.
It well, it falls on employees' laps. But I'll tell you, Kate and her team have really done a lot of work on this. And it's so much appreciated.
It'll be fun. It it should be a fun day.
It'll be a very fun day. And the last thing I'm just trying to uh. We are going back to our annual Halloween parade and party, which is the October twenty-eighth uh back at Montenegro Square. And uh we will, this will be the last Marching Parade down to the Bendis School.
Oh, wow.
Oh, that's a good point.
So uh we hope people can enjoy this.
Next year, we'll go to the new school.
And next year, well, that would be great. Um so, you know, we're we're gearing up.
We wearing the same costumes, Joe?
Uh, no.
Okay.
No, I have to get another parasol, but I, you know.
Okay. Just checking.
Are you gonna walk with us?
Of course, I do every year.
Okay.
It's fun. I'll get the candy.
That's all I have, Madam Chair.
All right.
Thank you.
Yolanda.
So one update, I am on the YMCA board and we had a board meeting last night and. The board strongly supported the feasibility study and the project moving forward. We will take a more formal vote at our next more meeting, board meeting, once they have a timeline laid out in regards to. Um funding and things like that, but the the schematics that they're showing are great and I think it's gonna be a.
Excellent.
A fabulous project, so that's nice to hear.
Yep. Is it gonna be a bigger bigger building than the one in Framingham or are they?
Well, have you been in the one in Framingham lately? They've added, they've, yeah, that's become bigger. I I mean, I think our, I think the new one here will be similar to the current size of the one in Framingham.
Oh, wow.
But they've added to the gym, they've added to the pool, they've added all kinds of stuff. If you haven't been to the Framingham Y recently, you should go check it out.
Okay, thank you.
So uh I will be doing Metro West Regional Collaborative Meeting on the twenty-seventh. And then I'll be attending the MAPC Fall Council Meeting. Both of them are virtual. And I've asked Peter Machik to talk to the planning board about getting us a new planning board representative. Cause they have to be two members from each town and right now I'm the only one from Ashland. Um I'm gonna put on my uh, ooh, that sounds loud. Um I'm helping out at a show this year, this week. So for those of you who are interested in some live theater and local live theater. The next three weekends, you have the opportunity to see three different shows. In uh Holliston, Washington Street Players is putting on the show Our Town. It's performed at Holliston Town Hall. It is this weekend, Friday and Saturday, and next weekend, the twenty-first, Friday and Saturday. Then you can see that one one of those weekends and then you can go to um Hopkinton Center for the Arts or HCA. They are putting on Young Frankenstein. It's a musical. Um after the Mel Brooks movie and show. And that is also the October fourteenth and fifteenth and then October twenty-first, twenty-second. And they actually have a matinee on Sunday, the twenty-third. And then Ashland Community Theater on the weekend of Halloween, so the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. They are putting on Dracula. So three great shows, three great local community theaters that are doing some wonderful things. We all talk about supporting culture and arts, so this is your opportunity. Uh Ashland, of course, it's Ashland residents. Hopkinton has Ashland residents as well as local people and Holliston as well. So go support some fun live theater and prices are reasonable. And yeah, it's it's time to get back and enjoy some live theater locally. And that's all I got.
Okay, thanks, Yolanda. Steve?
So just a couple of things. Uh number one, the farmer's market, our last Saturday of the season is this Saturday. Uh the fifteenth, uh our hours, nine to one. Uh we do have a Thanksgiving market that's scheduled for November the nineteenth, the Saturday before Thanksgiving. We're doing the same thing that we did last year. Uh the hours are ten to one. And uh it will be outdoors on Front Street. Uh and hopefully the weather's cooperative. It was great last year. We had a great turnout, so you know, hopefully it works out again. Uh the MMA Annual Meeting and Conference is coming up. Uh so I would ask Susan, when she gets back, to put out an email to the board. Whoever's gonna attend for registration, she can get that set up for us. Uh and then my last thing is there was an article in the Globe in September the twenty-second. And the article was about potential rolling blackouts during the winter. Because of the energy grid and pressures on the energy grid. And it seems like it's it's got gotten worse since then. Uh you know, the war in Ukraine and then the uh. Actions of of OPEC and and Russia with their uh energy supplies. So I I'm thinking about, you know, how do how does the town respond to? You know, issues of this nature. I know we've we've had cooling centers in the past. We've had warming centers and so on. You know, I just wanna make sure that residents know that there is, you know, a plan or a, you know, how do we? Uh I guess best get that in free information out to folks. And I don't, I'm not, you know, this is all potential. I don't think it's something that we, you know, have to make a formal announcement of now. But I'd like to know how we as an organization are prepared to deal with situations like that. Now, I know we were part of a grant program uh in twenty twenty, just before the pandemic shut everything down, a climate. Um what was it called? Community Resilience Building Workshop. And it had to do with, you know, how climate impacts uh different communities. For us, you know, it was drought, you know, impacts our water supply. Uh you know, winter, uh winter storms, uh heat waves, uh utility power issues, water supply issues, you know. So I guess, you know, and I know Evan was put worked that grant, so. You know, that might be something we might wanna have a an update on is in terms of. You know, how do we address these kinds of of potential uh issues where we've got? Vulnerable residents that need assistance and how, you know, how we go about capturing that. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Um so I just have a couple of things. This past Sunday, um Michael and I actually attended the Ashland Cricket League Finals. We had gotten a an email from the Ashland Indians. Um and so so we were there. It was like the Terminators versus Shaheen and it was a come-from-behind victory for Shaheen and I learned a lot about cricket. And.
Could you explain it in like twenty words or less?
No.
No?
No. I'm sure they'll be happy to give me a refresh, but um and they were talking about um the need for us to to look at ways. That we can incorporate a cricket pitch in 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 Ashland and a permanent one for them, so. There was lots of discussion on that and it was a it was a it was a great day, so. Um and I expect the Ashland Arrows, which is the Ashland team, to make it to the finals next year, so um no pressure there. Um and uh other than that, it's a busy, you know, we were talking about the parade and there's a lot of stuff going on in Ashland. Um uh Corner Spot's hosting their Fall Fest on Saturday afternoon after the parade, so I encourage folks to like. Go to the parade and then just walk over to to Corner Spot. They have face painting and games and music and food and beverages and all sorts of stuff. Um Fall Fest is always a good time and I think the weather's gonna be wonderful. Um and also just um a plug for Pumpkin Fest, which is the following weekend, the following Saturday, at the high school. Um the student council is putting this together. Um there's fancy houses and all sorts of things happening. Um over there as as sort of a a filler, a gap filler for for Ashland Day. So um the students are running that and the student council is is hosting, so um. Go check out Pumpkin Fest over at the high school on the twenty-second, I think it is, yes. Um and other than that, our next meeting is scheduled for the twenty-sixth, um just two weeks from now. And um I think that is everything, that is everything from me, so um could I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Sorry.
All those in favor? Paula Paula voted too. Uh so we're adjourned to ten fifty-four this evening. We'll see you guys in two weeks. Have a great night, everyone. Thank you for joining us.